Quiet in the chambers, please.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Committee on Education. At this moment, please be sure to silence your phone. If you wish to submit testimony, please do so at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Do not approach the dais at any moment. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you and welcome to the Education Committee. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's hearing on District 79 and Adult Education. I'm Rita Joseph, Chair of the Education Committee. Thank you to everyone present here today and to those who are testifying remotely. At today's hearing, we will hear testimony on the following legislation: Introduction Number 198, sponsored by Member Salamanca, and Resolution Number 883, sponsored by Councilmember Gennaro. We will hear more about this legislation shortly. District 79 is New York City Public Schools' Alternative School District, established to help students with an array of challenges succeed. D-79 provides full or part-time alternative educational services in diverse settings to meet the educational needs of students who are overage or behind in credit or have adult responsibilities that make it hard to attend school during the day. D-79 includes alternative learning centers to serve middle and high school students on long-term superintendent suspensions, as well as educational services for students who are arrested and detained or incarcerated at Passages Academy, East River Academy, and Restart Academy. In addition to academic programs, some of D-79 programs offer career and technical training for students. Adult education for those aged 21 and older, which formerly was a separate entity in DOE, called the Office of Adult and Continuing Education, was moved into D-79 during 2019 to 2020 school year. We'd like to hear from DOE today about the changes that have occurred in adult education as a result of the restructuring since it moved into D-79. We were also dismayed to see that DOE currently has only a single page on its website pertaining to adult education, which contains only basic information and directs anyone who wants to enroll to go to one of the adult education enrollment hubs located across the city. In prior years, DOE included links to additional information, including course catalogs for adult education, listing all of the classes offered, which is essential information if you really want to engage and interest potential students in enrolling. We'd like to find out more about DOE's outreach, recruitment efforts for adult education. The committee is also concerned about the performance outcome of students in D-79 schools as certain vulnerable populations are overrepresented in D-79 programs, including male, Black, and Native American students, as well as students with disabilities and students experiencing poverty. Additionally, we all know that COVID-19 pandemic caused severe disruption in instruction in services at schools throughout the country, including New York City. While this committee had held several hearings on the impact of the pandemic and distance learning on various programs, we hope to learn more today on how the pandemic has specifically impacted D-79 programming and the vulnerable students it serves. Furthermore, New York City has seen a huge influx of asylum seekers in the past year, including more than 12,000 students that have entered the school system. We'd like to know how many of those new immigrant students are attending D-79 programs and how these programs are supporting new arrival migrant families, many of whom have experienced interrupted learning and trauma. Finally, we look forward to hearing testimony on Introduction 198, which is a bill that requires the Department of Education to stock opioid antagonists in all school buildings. We also will hear Resolution 83 calling upon the mayor's office and a DOE to recognize and observe SIK holiday Vajaski on April 13 each year. I want to thank everyone who's testifying today. I also want to thank the city council staff, as well as my own staff, for all of the work they put in today's hearing. I'd like to remind everyone who wishes to testify in person that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located at the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the entrance of this room. To allow as many people as possible to testify, testimonies will be limited to three minutes per person, whether you're testifying on Zoom or in person. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to limit their questions and comments to five minutes. Before we begin, I'd like to turn to Councilmember Salamanca for his remarks on Introduction 198.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to speak on my bill, Intro 198, which would require all New York City schools to have opioid antagonists on school property. New York is losing a silent battle as our opioid crisis has hit a new high point with drug overdoses claiming the lives of over 2,600 New Yorkers, an increase of nearly 80% from 2019 numbers. According to the city medical examiner, overdose deaths now account for almost 85% of the accidental deaths in New York City. My district knows all too well about the perils of opioid use as neighborhoods in the 17th District, Hunts Point, Mount Haven, and Morrisania are the top zip codes for overdose deaths in New York City. What's even more alarming is statistics in New York City and across the nation showing teens are dying at higher rates from drug overdoses than ever before, a trend which correlates with fentanyl crisis and that has ravished our country. As fentanyl is mixed and undetectable with many drugs, the need to protect our children has never been greater. Throughout the country, school districts are recognizing this new reality. In September of 2022, shortly after a 15-year-old died of an overdose on campus, the Los Angeles School District, the country's second-largest school district after New York City, required naloxone kits in all L.A. schools. Closer to home, schools in Westchester, Nassau, and Suffolk Counties have all begun stocking their schools with naloxone, and sadly, they're already being put to use to save lives. Coming full circle, the 17th Council District is no stranger to the issue of an overdose death within a New York City school. On November 30 of 2018, a beloved school education teacher at PS 811 in my district overdosed in a school bathroom just after dismissal. This teacher's death in the South Bronx reinforced a belief that I've held since I introduced this legislation in August of 2017, that New York City schools should stock opioid antagonists on school premises. Since 2017, the reality of prevalence of drug use and drug overdose deaths has only grown bleaker, and the data supports my legislation like Intro 198 is needed. Thank you, Chair Joseph, for allowing me to speak on my bill and to my colleagues who have already signed as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Salamanca. Now I will read a statement from Councilmember Gennaro, sponsor of Resolution Number 83. Thank you, Chairwoman Joseph, for allowing my resolution to be heard today. Resolution 83 will finally bring attention to the important SIK holiday of Vajaski. The SIK community has been making significant contribution to the city, is an integral part of what makes our community so richly diverse and thriving. Unfortunately, despite this, national surveys show that many Americans know little about SIK culture. This ignorance compounded with national anxiety caused by the tragic events of 9/11 have led to a dramatic increase in hate crimes targeting SIK Americans. In New York City alone, there are approximately 60,000 SIK residents, many of whom have not had their voice heard as clearly as other communities. As SIK celebrate Vajaski this month, a holiday that focuses on equality and the oneness of humanity, I can think of no better time to finally recognize the most sacred and honorable day for this community. I urge my colleague here in the council to join me in this resolution calling on the Department of Education to formally recognize this holiday so we can begin to end the cycle of ignorance that plagues this community. Thank you all for your time. Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues that are present: Councilmember Salamanca, Councilmember Dinowitz, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Stevens, Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Krishnan, Councilmember Ung, Councilmember Gutierrez, Councilmember Shulman, Councilmember Lee, and Councilmember De La Rosa. Now, without anything further, I'd like to turn to our first witness panel. I will now turn the council to the committee, Nadia Jean-François, to administer the oath.
Thank you so much, Chair. I will call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hand. If you could all just please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Glenda Esperance? Jacqueline Jones? And Annette Knox? Thank you so much. You may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Joseph and members of the City Council Committee on Education here today. My name is Glenda Esperance, and I'm the proud Superintendent of District 79, Alternative Schools and Programs at New York City Public Schools. I'm joined by Jacqueline Jones, Deputy Superintendent of District 79, and Annette Knox, Executive Director of Adult Education. We are pleased to be here today to discuss our work on the range of D-79 programs and our efforts to provide high-quality adult education programming to New York City residents. I thank the city council and particularly Chair Joseph for your support of D-79 and adult education programs. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to tell you all about my background and how I came to this essential work. I was born and raised in Brooklyn to immigrant parents and am a proud product of New York City Public Schools. I come here with 40 years of experience in public education as a student, a special education teacher, and adult education teacher, literacy coach, assistant principal, principal, director of school quality, director of special education, and now superintendent. My broad and intense knowledge of academic and social-emotional learning inspires me to identify, rectify, and find ways to navigate the barriers that some of our students face. As the leader of D-79, I endeavor each day to ensure that enriched opportunities become the standard for all students, regardless of zip code, classification, or demographics. District 79 is a citywide district comprised of 10 distinctive programs, serving approximately 50,000 students. Our programs operate in and around 350 sites located across the city, from multi-classroom sites co-located in large educational campuses with New York City Public Schools, I'm sorry, with New York City Public High Schools, to individual classrooms and community-based organizations or other partner agencies. Many of our students are disconnected from school prior to enrolling in our programs and had unfulfilled educational experiences. We serve a population in which nearly 80% of our students or their families qualify for HRA benefits. And more than one out of 10 students are in temporary housing. D-79 programs are focused on changing their trajectory by empowering our students and equipping them with the knowledge and the skills they need to be successful. Our district's priority is to provide targeted support that addresses the individual needs of our students. And in doing so, we help students earn a high school diploma, high school equivalency, HSC, or a career and technology education certification, build the skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary opportunities, including college and/or career, and provide supports and interventions that help students gain the social-emotional skills necessary to become confident and productive members of society. D-79 programs include the following strands: So we have Career and Tech Education at Co-op Tech, Services for Students' Parents at Life, which stands for Living for the Young Family Through Education, Restart Middle Schools, which have services for our overage, undercredited middle school students, the Judith S.K. High School NYABC, which stands for Young Adult Borough Centers, which provides services for overage, undercredited students working towards earning a high school diploma. We have Pathways to Graduation, serving our under-21 students to get their high school equivalency diploma. Students serving superintendent suspension, receiving services through our alternate learning centers. Youth Justice and Treatment involves students, which include Restart Academy, Passages Academy, and East River Academy. And last, and certainly not least, our district's adult education program, which serves our 21 and over learners. D-79's adult education program is committed to empowering New York City's adults in their pursuit of knowledge and helping students earn gateway credentials towards career opportunities. My motivation for this work is rooted in a story about a young lady named Ella, who migrated from Haiti to New York City for a better life for herself and her family. Although she had been a teacher in Haiti for over 10 years, upon her arrival to New York City, Ella had to start over because she did not know the language and her credentials were not acknowledged in the United States. Whenever possible, Ella worked odd jobs, off the books, to pay for her day-to-day living expenses. In the evening, she took free English learning literacy classes at a church on Nostrand Avenue in Brooklyn. Her transition was not an easy feat. However, her persistent and her consistent exposure to high-quality instruction paid off. Today, Ella is fluent in English and improved her basic education literacy skills, enabled her to obtain U.S. residency, steady employment with benefits, and permanent housing. Ella is my mother. And the beginning of her journey mirrors many of our students in adult education, who are in pursuit of the American dream. They have the desire to make a better life for themselves and their families. Our adult education student body represents the rich diversity and beauty of the city. Last year, we served students representing more than 190 countries. The average age of an adult and continuing education student is 39. 60% of our students are women, 24% are parents, and almost 70% are low-income. The majority of students we serve in adult education, roughly 65%, are seeking English as a second language support. And many enter our program performing at the lowest English proficiency levels. ESOL instruction teaches students basic language and academic skills they need to successfully complete higher education or job training programs. In addition, adult basic education, also referred to as ABE, and adult secondary education, classes prepare students for high school equivalency tests. Our adult learners can participate in classes at any of our sites across all five boroughs. The majority of adult and continuing education programs are funded by prospective New York State Employment Preparation Education Grant, which is called EPI, from the New York State Education Department. This grant provides more than $30 million in annual funding. In addition, federal funding for adult and continuing education includes a five-year Workforce Initiative Opportunity Act, which is also known as WIOA, and others for a total of approximately $5... I'm sorry, for a total of $5 million. We also received almost $16 million in city funding this year to support adult education services. Now, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that the challenges posed by COVID-19 took a toll on each of us. The interrupted instruction and other upheaval and trauma shined a glaring light on the need for our adult education programs to continue prioritizing high-quality academic instruction and emotional support for students and as well as staff. Under Chancellor Banks' leadership, we have implemented several new initiatives to strengthen adult education programming and supports, and are pleased with the progress being made while recognizing that we still have more work to do. Specifically, we have launched new initiatives and expanded our efforts on the existing priorities. In 2021, we launched 10 enrollment hubs to increase access to programming, provide more enrollment connections, improve retention, and elevate student outcomes. Now, there is at least one enrollment hub located in each borough. The adult education enrollment hubs are targeted points of entry for access, assessment, and referral to adult education sites. They create a uniform enrollment process to maximize enrollment effectively, providing consistent communication and efficient mechanism for timely referral and enrollment follow-up, and a supportive environment that promotes student engagement. In addition, our enrollment hub staff engage students with the completion of the enrollment process, building students' confidence and commitment to the adult education community. To ensure that New Yorkers are aware of the services and opportunities available to them via adult education, we also deploy eight full-time community liaisons. Their primary responsibility is to engage with the community leaders and other city agencies while attending events throughout the city to advertise class availability. In addition, adult education and continuing and continuing education partners with other divisions within New York City Public Schools in conducting outreach. We have also begun to streamline our messaging to students through an outreach team that more intentionally communicates our focus on helping students earn high school equivalency diplomas. With regards to professional development, all adult education classes are taught by certified teachers, and we have prioritized curriculum and professional development for our teachers. More recently, we have recommitted to ensuring our programs provide curricula strictly aligned to the standards and skills students need for their high school equivalency exams. We have created structures to provide our teachers with constructive feedback and coaching so they can effectively prepare our students to obtain their diplomas. Additionally, we provide targeted professional learning for our school leaders centered on building capacity, tiered instruction, and progress monitoring. All school leaders are required to create a quality education plan that provides each site with targeted goals connected to attendance, instruction, social-emotional learning, and community engagement, as well as action steps and progress monitoring tools. We recognize that students progressing through our programs face many challenges, including the grade level proficiency at which they may be entering the program. Therefore, we have provided professional learning on high-leverage practices to support all students. We have also partnered with the New York City Public Schools' Special Education Central Team to ensure that the city's initiative to effectively screen dyslexia extends beyond the K-12 realm. We have already conducted site visits and are finalizing details of our pilot program tailored to meet the needs of our 21 and over population. And finally, we created a social and emotional handbook that provides abundant resources for teachers to incorporate into their classrooms daily. With regards to individual social-emotional supports, once again, we will reiterate the pandemic impact on all students extended far beyond academics, and that applies as well to our adult education students. We deploy our case managers all across all boroughs as community resources for staff to conduct informational workshops for students covering relevant issues while helping to refer and connect students to local agencies and service providers. In cases where students could not attend due to childcare issues, case managers have assisted by connecting them to the Life Program, which offers consistent, high-quality, early childhood education services for children aged six weeks to three years of student parents. The support enables students' parents to attend classes regularly, improving their futures and those of their children. Our case managers also help experienced students back on track in a variety of ways. For example, they identify students who may have earned an engineering degree from their home country and enroll them in programs designed to put them on path to rebuild their careers here in New York City. When our students have struggled with health issues or food scarcity, our case managers have referred them to essential healthcare treatment and food pantry programs to ensure their basic needs are met. It is clear how vital these services are in supporting our students' paths to success, and we continue to explore ways to enhance their impact and expand our number of case managers in adult education. Our four literacy zones in our adult education learning centers in Manhattan, the Bronx, Queens, and Brooklyn provide support in social services, financial literacy, legal services, and many other needs in addition to hosting job and health fairs. We also have an adult education student advisory committee, which meets with myself and my team to discuss and offer suggestions on student resources, curriculum, climate, and culture, and more. This committee offers invaluable insight into the needs and aspirations of our students directly from their perspective. As a direct result of input from this committee, we've purchased technology and hired a district immigration advocacy team to provide guidance to students in the program. Adult education also has an expanding Career and Technology Education, CTE, program. Serving students across the city, our CTE program is specifically focused on workforce development. Students who complete our classes gain industry knowledge and state certifications, in addition to earning their diploma. This program allows students to pursue meaningful employment and/or post-secondary education with course offerings ranging from basic computer literacy to certified nursing assistants, automotive, and construction programs. We have also worked to expand our offerings to include additional certifications focused on preparing students for participation in the 21st century economy, such as communications, media, computer graphics technology, solar panel repair, fashion apparel, and design engineering, and much more. As was mentioned in the initial test, as was already mentioned, we are intentional in aligning our efforts in support of the city's comprehensive approach to addressing the needs of the asylum seekers who arrived in the five boroughs since last spring. We continue to collaborate with New York City Public Schools' Students in Temporary Housing Department and FWC staff to ensure that they have clear and consistent communication about adult education opportunities to support families who live in shelters. Currently, we work with and support Department of Human Services, DHS, and HERC leadership in opening additional sites to serve their residents as needed, with partnerships already at two HERC sites and five DHS sites. Our team has written a program implementation plan that provides guidance on the required action steps and personnel for the effective opening of a program anywhere. And most important, we recognize that the data points alone do not tell the whole story, so conversations with community stakeholders have been a vital part of our next steps for expansion. We have been meeting with community superintendents and community elective officials for guidance in creating customized programming. These discussions have been extremely important because they will help us build a more accurate picture of the needs of each neighborhood. We will use the insight from our assessments and discussions from community stakeholders to leverage resources across agencies to make our adult education program one of the best in New York State. Each successful outcome will be a result of effective collaboration to build a culture of trust between students, staff, and community members. I will now turn to the proposed legislation regarding Introduction 198 by Councilmember Salamanca. The administration supports the intent of this bill. We recognize the importance of equipping our school health nurses and staff with the proper resources and training for any medical situation that may arise. For this reason, the Office of School Health has already begun preparations to stop naloxone and train staff in its administration by the start of the 2023 school year. The data overwhelmingly suggests that overdoses are extremely rare among New York City youth. Overdose deaths for those aged 15 to 18 accounted for less than 0.2% of overdose deaths citywide in 2021. Our recommendation is to stop naloxone in high schools only. In conclusion, we are committed to ensuring that New York City residents have access to high-quality education. The trajectory of our programs over the last four years have demonstrated immense progress, and we are confident that these trends will continue in a positive direction. We greatly appreciate the partnership with Chair Joseph in thinking and working holistically on those efforts to enhance the adult education experience in her district and citywide, because we've already started that work. We look forward to our continued partnership with the city council in this vital work. Thank you today for your time.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Felice and Councilmember Narcisse. Councilmember Hanks. Thank you. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Salamanca.
Thank you, Chair Joseph, and thank you for your testimony today. And thank you for your staff being here in today's hearing. In reading your statement here, I see here that the Department of Education supports my legislation. But... my legislation, but right now you're only recommending to stock naloxone in high schools only. Can you explain why only high schools?
So I actually have two members that are going to assist with that response. Thank you.
Sorry, they need to be sworn in first.
Okay.
If you could fill out a witness slip for them.
We did. They do, they did, I'm sorry.
Is this with the Health Department?
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
Okay.
All right. So, one second. If you could please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Dr. Jonathan Giffos? And you may begin your testimony.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Salamanca.
Turn on your mic, please. Thank you.
Just, it's good to be here. Thanks for having us. And Councilmember Salamanca, thank you for your support and your attention to the overdose crisis in New York City. I know your district has been particularly impacted, and I know we have a lot of collaboration. In terms of the risk of overdose in young people in New York City, we're very fortunate that overdose rates in young people are extremely low in New York City. There was five deaths in 2021 among youth 15 to 18 in New York City, and we don't have evidence that schools or places have increased risk of opioid overdose at this time, but we do know that that, even any risk in a school, is important to pay attention to and to address. And given that the, any overdose events that we are familiar with in that age group have been in the high school population, we think that's a good place to start.
So LA is doing it, and LA is doing it in all grades, all schools, elementary, junior high school, and high school. They have the second-largest school district in the country. We are the greatest city in the world. Why are we going at such a low scale when we can provide naloxone at all schools?
So, I think what's important to remember in New York City is that we have one of the largest naloxone distribution networks in the country. In 2022, we distributed over 200,000 naloxone kits for free through our opioid overdose prevention programs that exist all across the city, and all community members in New York, including school staff and students, are able to get naloxone through that system. In terms of specifically distributing and stocking in schools with school health staff, we think that it makes the most sense to focus that effort on high schools.
Whose decision was that?
This was a decision made in collaboration with the Office of School Health and the Department of Education.
All right. You do know that, at least in Diana, Councilmember Ayala's district and my district, we are ground zero for opioid use in our, in our communities, especially on 149 Street and Third Avenue. Across the street from Lincoln Hospital, you have Patterson Houses, and you have an elementary school there. And we are having issues with individuals who are using opioids in the playgrounds and on the sidewalks. Do you not think that it would be responsible for the city of New York, it's an elementary school, to have naloxone stocked there? Should someone overdose in front of the school, that the Narcan will be available where a school teacher or a school safety officer or a nurse can have it readily available to save a life? Or would you prefer that the city of New York be sued because you decided not to have Narcan in an elementary school?
We want to make sure that naloxone is, is in the hands of people most likely to witness an overdose, and we prioritize our distribution through our OPPs to places that...
You're only prioritizing high schools?
In terms of school staff member-specific training and distribution, we are focused on, we think high schools is a, is a good place to start. That's what the data seems to suggest is the place to start.
All right. I respectfully disagree. I think that Narcan should be stocked in all schools regardless of the ages, just to save lives. So DOE will take measures to stock Narcan in high schools by the start of fall of 2023. Can you guarantee every high school will have opioid antagonists or Narcan on day one of the school, of starting of school for 2023?
Hi. I need to just swear you in first.
Yes.
If you could please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Tracy Agarson?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So yes, we have every intention of having naloxone in every single school where we have a school nurse placement, so that would be in all DOE schools and any non-public schools also, high schools, where we have our nurses.
Question, why are you only choosing to train or having, only train school nurses to administer Narcan?
Well, for the Office of School Health right now, that's what we can do as, as far as, you know, giving medication administration in schools, it must be administered by a licensed personnel for, for the, for the purposes of giving it to a student, except under an emergency, you know, if somebody is trained as a community member and they carry their personal Narcan on their person, they could give it as, you know, as a concerned citizen. But as far as stocked Narcan in a school as part of the Office of School Health medication, we're training our nurses and our, and actually our support staff that work in the medical room for that.
So, question, every school has a defibrillator, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if a student is in gym and they need to, a defibrillator needs to be used, only the nurse can, can use a defibrillator or school staff can, can use the defibrillator as well?
So the nurse is the first point of contact for use of a defibrillator, and then there should be trained staff in the school.
All right. Do you not think that if you're...
At least one person.
I went to public schools. The gym was on the first floor, the nurse is on the third floor. So if someone needs a defibrillator in the first floor, we're gonna, we're going to kill time and wait for the nurse to come down to, to use the defibrillator?
No, I said, actually, the nurse is the first person that would use the defibrillator, and there's supposed to be somebody else trained in the school that can also...
So why not all staff should be trained to use Narcan to save a life?
Well, right now, we actually support schools to do, community to be part of the community training that John was talking about. So right now, we do do that. What's under our control is to be able to stock our medical rooms with naloxone and first to train our nurses up for, and the medical room staff in that administration. That's our intent to do by the start of the school year.
How many, do all, do all schools have nurses in their schools?
Almost all schools have nurses.
What is almost? What percentage?
About 99%.
My next question here, excuse me, I'm sorry. Will DOE, what will DOE do to ensure that schools in my district, which have some of the highest overdose rates to begin with, will have the proper Narcan kits?
Well, for us in school health, we're going to be stocking all the high schools with the Narcan, and we've, again, we've been encouraging schools, particularly in, in areas like in your district, to participate in the community Narcan, naloxone training and administration program. If they want to support their staff and their school community, they can, they can do that.
So my question to DOE, are you planning on training your staff to utilize Narcan should the emergency arise?
I don't think right now there is a formal plan, but we can work with, I think that what we're hearing, your concern, I think we can work with our DOE colleagues.
Yeah. You represent the school, the, the, the...
The Office of School Health.
The School Health Division. So I'm asking the administration, are you, are you willing to train your staff to administer Narcan should the, should the emergency arise?
That's what I was going to say. At this time, I can't answer that because I'm not in the position to make, to give a response to that.
All right. I would love to get a response after this hearing from the, from the chancellor himself or the, or the administration. Question, what about parents? Would it be helpful to have it available in all schools in case a parent, there's a parent overdose?
Well, I mean, again, I think if schools can participate and have parents and siblings carry naloxone, also, we've, school staff can also carry if they've participated in that, and if we have this stocked naloxone in the high schools, then we'll be able to use it on anybody, including visitors, if necessary.
It's just frustrating for me. You know, I introduced this bill in 2017, and I got pushed back from the previous administration. They did not even want to have a hearing. There was no interest in having Narcans in any other schools. Here I am, I'm extremely happy to hear that this administration is open to having Narcans, but now you're only trying to restrict it to high schools, as if, you know, as if the issue is only in high schools there. You know, I, I feel that there needs to be an out-of-the-box thinking, you need to be, think bigger. If LA can do it, the greatest city of the world, New York City, can do it as well. And it's just frustrating to hear that you're not open to having it in other schools other than just high school. And I want to give a big shout out to the UFT. I read your statement, I may not be here for the end, but UFT recognizes the importance of having Narcan in all schools, and if UFT is supporting this bill, there should be no reason why this administration would not support to carry Narcan in all schools regarding of the ages. With that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilmember, thank you so much. We hope that we would come to an understanding to have it in all schools just for precautionary reasons. Thank you. Councilmember Dinowitz, I'm going to change it a little today. Councilmember Dinowitz, five minutes, let's go.
Sure. Thank, just, just very quick on Salamanca's bill, your website says 90%, not 99% of schools have nurses, and I would bet that it's the elementary schools that prioritize having nurses. So I would guess an even lower percentage of high schools have these, these, these nurses on staff. So I would, on behalf of Salamanca, really try to check your numbers or fix your website, because one of the two ain't correct. But I want to talk about students who speak languages other than English and just get a little information clear about how these programs function at District 79 schools. So for the students seeking high school equivalency exam, is that the GED, that the test you now use?
Yes, we now use the GED.
And so do you have a breakdown of what percent of the students seeking that exam speak English as their first language, Spanish, and a language other than Spanish?
So we, so just to kind of, and first and foremost, thank you for your question, Councilmember. With regards, I just want to give some background with regards to the HSC and how it works. So we have students who come in and they, and we have different levels, so depending on the program. So are you asking for D-79 overall, or are you asking for adult education? Just want to get clarity on that.
D-79 overall.
So D-79 overall, we, so we can give you that information with regards to pathways graduation.
Sure.
Because pathways to graduation is our centralized program that is geared towards the high school equivalency. And so your ask, once again, is how many...
It's just like the breakdown of English speakers, native English speakers, native Spanish speakers, and then others for whom, a language other than English and Spanish is their primary language.
So we may not have it as granular as Spanish, but we can definitely do our English learners and our, our English language learners and our non-English language learners. So we'll give you that information.
Yeah. Though, I'll tell you the reason I'm asking it.
Okay.
You know, I'm concerned with language access in New York City in a couple of ways, but regarding the GED, it's only given in English and Spanish.
Yeah.
And so I'm wondering, that, which is different than the Regents exam, which is given in a number of languages, English, Spanish, two different types of Chinese, Arabic, and Bengali, but not the GED. So I'm concerned and trying to figure out either what supports you give that are, you know, not for non-Spanish, non-English speakers, and if you have intensive language supports to, you know, English supports. And I want to add one other element, that you mentioned in your testimony, you have eight liaisons that go out into the community. I will share that I have never heard of them, but I'm wondering what relationships they have with the local schools and, and what relationship you have with other departments within the DOE. And the reason I'm asking this is because, for a perfect example, I have a school in Norwood, a lot of the families speak Bengali. The advertisement outside the school is translated into a bunch of languages, not into Bengali. I would bet a lot of those, I happen to know a lot of those parents, would greatly benefit from intensive English language instruction and from high school equivalency.
And so, Councilmember, everything that you've lifted is right on the money with what we've been prioritizing here at the district level with regards to programming. So first and foremost, just to respond back to what your initial ask, to the GED test, as you said, it is only offered as the alternative language is Spanish, and that's just because it's, that's the New York State reg. And so, as we mentioned in our testimony, we have students represented from 190 countries. And so the work has been that in spite of the fact that it's only entered, that the test is only in Spanish, how do we make sure that we provide our ESL and MLL students? Because these are, even though, English may not necessarily be their second language, how do we make sure that we provide them with high-quality instruction as well as access into the curriculum so that they can excel? So some of the things that we do first and foremost is whenever possible, we get things translated into their home language. And having it translated into their home language, it makes it accessible for them to be able to go through and have the necessary practice, and that's especially important in mathematics, because there's often, if I come here and I don't speak English and I don't know math, and we've seen research that is the opposite, that I may not do well on this math test, it's not because I don't know computation aspect, it's just I don't understand how to read it. So we translate it in that.
Absolutely. With 10 seconds left, I do want to ask, do you have the intensive...
So with regards to the intensive instruction, what we do is we've partnered with the MLL department in New York City Public Schools, and so what we've done is provide intense training to our teachers so that they have the capacity to provide access and make the resources accessible. In addition to that, for our under-21 population, we, the mandates that are in place in traditional K-12 schools, are those still mandates in those places as well? So under any program for our students that are under-21, they still get that ESL support by a certified ESL teacher. And then just one more thing to add to your point, which has been most important work that we've done so far, is that we are meeting with community superintendents, their principals, their parent coordinators, as well as our council members, so that we make sure that we are customizing the instruction. I'm going to give an example. Chair Joseph, at the very beginning, told us that there was a neighborhood in either District 20 or 22 that there was a large Arabic population, and the work needed to be customized and structured. She told us to go find Zack. Sorry, I don't remember Zack's last name. We went and found Zack. And so it wasn't, because it wasn't only a language barrier, it was also how the classes should be structured. We want to take into consideration that it's not only about the academics, also the cultural setup. Sometimes classes can't be mixed between genders. Sometimes it has to be during a certain time. And so that's why the work has really been to not only offer programs that we have that's already structured and we know that's been vetted, but make sure that they're meeting the needs of the community. So the community that you speak about, we would love to follow up on it with you so that we can make sure that we have that conversation with the superintendent as well as those parents to make sure that things are translated in that language that's necessary, because we have a translation department in the New York City Public Schools, and we make sure that those classes are customized to meet the needs of that community.
Thank you. Look forward to that meeting. Thank you, Chair Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dinowitz. Councilmember Narcisse?
Nice seeing you again, Ms. Glenda Esperance. Thank you for coming. Thank you, Chair Joseph. What are the most recent four-years, five-years, and six-years graduation rates for students educated in Passage Academy? How about for students educated at East River Academy? How many and what percentage of this student at each program have received Regent Diploma, two CDOS credentials, three Regent Diploma plus CDOS credentials, and four Skills and Achievement Commencement credentials?
It's a pleasure seeing you again, also, Councilmember Narcisse. What I will say with, and so that's a really great question, that's something that we actually monitor internally. The one thing I just want to, and my deputy Jackie Joseph, Jackie Jones will give more insight on it, but I just want to preface with the structure of East River Academy as well as Passages, that's one of the programs that on any given day, the register will change because it's the youth involved. And so with regards to the tracking of the five, six, the four, five, six graduation rate, we don't, at those sites, we don't necessarily issue... we don't necessarily issue diplomas. What we do is, we're that conduit while they're out of school, but in the process of transitioning into that youth justice space, we provide the academic resources, and Jackie will share a little bit more, Deputy Jackie.
Good afternoon, Councilman, and thank you very much, Superintendent Glenda, I was actually going to say very similar to what Superintendent already said with regards to the setup, and how our ERA and Passages Academy programs are set up in terms of awarding local Regents diplomas. So, therefore, to answer your question, if you can give me something more specific, exactly what you're looking for, maybe I can actually, you know, move in that direction.
So, you don't have the statistic of the Regent diplomas and the CDOS?
Those particular numbers, if you're looking for overall, from the actual local or Regents diplomas, from the actual schools that they come from, which is their sending schools, we have here as of October 2023, but this is pretty much, I have the IEP information, so if you have that, yeah.
So, what I'll share, what I will share with you, is with regards to, so I can give you more concrete information around Passages, because Passages, that age band, those students are still mandated to attend school, whereas when you get to East River Academy, 18 and older, all the academics that they receive is voluntary. So, with regards to Passages, and let me just grab that up, with regards to Passages, the total number of graduates in 2021, 22, that was last year, was nine, with regards to the Regents diplomas, it was nine, with regards to, and, and once again, that's what we have right here, with regards to individual classes, give me one second, 43, number of Regents that were taken, with regards to the attempt, let me see, yeah, 43.
Forty-three, so, how many and what percentage of students in Passages Academy and East River Academy have IEPs? How many have IEPs for D-75 programs versus D-132 programs?
Jackie will provide that information.
Okay, yes, so that's more my department, I'm the more of the special ed and IEPs, so with regards to, as of October 2023, we have 55% of our East River Academy students have IEPs, 58% of them.
What's the percentage, repeat it again for me?
I'm sorry.
Repeat it, the number, IEPs?
Yes, 55%, 126 from East River Academy students have IEPs, 58%, particularly in 158 from our Passages Academy students have IEPs. Of the 126 ERA students with IEPs, 22% have a D-75 homeschool, 56% are from Districts 1 through 32, 3% are in charter schools, and remaining 19% are from other D-79 programs. For the 158 Passages Academy students, 23% have a D-75 homeschool, 69% are in Districts 1 through 32 schools, 6% are in charter schools, and the remaining 2% are from other D-79 programs.
Thank you for your time, and thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez?
Thank you Chair, good afternoon, I have three questions, my first one that I'm really curious about is relating to supporting asylum seekers, it's really encouraging to hear that you are all partnering with DHS on two HERC sites, I'm curious if the same is true for HERC sites being operated by HPD, I have one that opened maybe three weeks ago, it's about capacity, about 520 single men, and actually, one of the community's requests has been adult education, English language, is that something that you are all considering to doing, expanding into future HERC sites?
So, we've actually had, started to have that conversation about that site that was there, we know that many.
On Jefferson, in Bushwick, the HERC site in Bushwick?
I don't know, I know we have a site, that was a mail site, that somebody reached out to us regarding that, that we've already started those conversations, because I know DYCD was picking up many of the ESL classes that were being offered there, with regards to the mail, so with any site that requests our partnership, what we've done is, we've created an implementation plan on exactly what's needed for us to have it implemented in that specific site. What we've also done, to, just so that we could ensure that there aren't any barriers that they have with regards to attending classes, we have the sites in the actual spaces, and so once there's a space that's carved out, all they would have to do is go right down into that place, so that they can get that, receive that instruction, Annette, is there anything that I need to add, or did I hit on it?
In reference to the plans with the HERC sites, one of the things that we have done, because we know that this is a situation where we're going to have to address over and over again, we have created with that Adult Education D-79, a plan, so when we are called, and we collaborate with HERC all the time, and we are planning on looking further into the new site, when we do, we already have our plan in place, we'll send the team, and the team will go in to look at the site, to find, to identify a space for instruction, appropriate furniture, we have a curriculum of ventures, which we initiate in the program, we also send in certified ESL teachers, the only problem that we might have at a time like this, which we will overcome in some way, is it's very difficult to find teachers at this point, you know, to fill in the gaps in the classes, but we make a concerted effort to make sure that we provide the instruction, as well as the teachers, so all of those pieces, as a matter of fact, we just had a meeting last week with HERC to discuss, so we will be getting back to you about that particular site.
And, and just to add on the beauty of our program, and that's why we really are working consciously and collaboratively to raise awareness about it, is that our resources are free, and so that's one of the things that we're really proud of, is that our resources come free to wherever places that we're serving, and for whatever that organization is, and so that's why we want to make sure that.
I would love to discuss more, because it's, and I don't know if there's a difference, but this is an HPD run HERC, which is, I know, a little unusual to the DHS ones, but if it's, if it's not a huge point of distinction, I would love to talk further about that.
So, we'll definitely take your information, Councilmember, and we will follow up.
Fantastic.
So, we're excited about this as well.
Yes, and then my, my next question is related to CTE programming, and it's, it's maybe not specific to D-79, but I'm sure we can, we can have it relate, so, the first question is related to just the procurement process, I mean, CTE is such a unique program, it's really successful, I am really supportive of it in my district, and some of the schools, like Williamsburg High School of Architecture and Design, it can be really transformative for, for our young people, so just curious if you are all looking to make some adjustments to procurement roles, to make it easier for schools with CTE to purchase items that are necessary to their programs, for example, architectural programs are something more curated, but is not necessarily found with, you know, the, with shop DOE, is my first question.
So, I, I, once again, thank you for the question, but just to be completely honest, I can't answer that particular thing about procurement, as overall with CTE, but what I can definitely speak to is our Co-op Tech program, where, I echo your same sentiments, that it is a lot of resources that are necessary to have a thriving CTE program, we work in partnership with our CTE programs to make sure that they're getting the resources on a district level, we will definitely lift your concerns and bring them back with regards to the procurement, and if possible, we will definitely give a response, but I know with that one right there, that's not something that.
Gotcha, I mean, the, the last piece, and I guess it's not so much a question anymore, is, is because CTE, you know, is evolving with the job market, is evolving with those students' needs of, of kind of what they want to pursue, I think we should be reducing barriers to be able to integrate programming, new software that is relevant for that program, but oftentimes, New York City Public Schools, for example, because of the process, it's a barrier for, for our young people, and it's a barrier for the educators to be able to do, to fulfill the, the mission of, of the CTE program in a way that is like current and relevant, so would just love to explore that better.
Awesome, and what I also want to share with you, is what we have, what we do have, that, what we, that we, the program that we do have that helps break barriers down with regards to CTE is Co-op Tech. So, Co-op Tech not only services a D-79 community, but we also do shared programming with different high schools throughout the city, as well as different programs, we have D-75 students that participate in Co-op Tech, they come for a half-day, because there are some spaces that they just physically don't have the space to outfit a CTE program, so they come and use our resources. We have Co-op Tech that also supplements the work in the, in the evening for our adult education learners, so they could utilize that space. I'm going to just give another example of a partnership that we already have in place with one of the councilmembers, Councilmember Narcisse walked and explored Co-op Tech with us, and I invite everyone on the panel to feel free to come and walk Co-op Tech, after she walked Co-op Tech with us, we actually have a Co-op Tech hub in Canarsie, Brooklyn, and what we did, we had a needs assessment of what programming her community needs, and so for the fall, we've already started conversations of how we can launch a program that supports the needs of the high school students and post-secondary students in the morning, and then supplement the needs of the students who are in South Shore, which is a high-population ESL Haitian group, of them going there in the evening to utilize that same space to advance the career technology aspect, so once again, we are in alignment with the fact of expanding the CTE opportunities and bringing down barriers, and we would love to continue the conversation.
Thank you, thank you Councilmember, I have, my, my questions is always data, and I will get deep into it, how many students are currently enrolled in each D-79 program in total, by students, demographic, characteristics, including gender, race, ethnicity, and income level?
And so, when you, you said overall on each program?
Each program.
Okay, just give us one second, we have that information, so, Jackie will give overall in all the other programs, and Annette will provide the information on adult education particularly, okay? Sure, I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Hanif and Councilmember Aviles for joining us. Okay, so, we'll, we'll start with adult education, and then we'll do overall programming.
Okay, this year, we have, sorry.
I'm sorry, thank you for the question, it's an excellent question, this year, we have enrolled in our adult education program 19,000 students, and we have, we've served this year 27,018 students, and I know you say, well, you served 27,018, enroll means the students who've come in, registered, the served students are the ones who've been with us for more than 12 hours, and you had a question about demographics, okay, in our program, in '23, 41% of our students are male, 59% of our students are female, low-income, 73%, our average age is 39, it always hovers between 37 and 39. How many of our students are parents? 19% of our students are parents, how many of our students are African, 18%, Latina, 58%, Asian, 11%, white, 4%, African-American, 8%, Afro-Caribbean, 8%, Native American, 1%, and for the other groups, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Island, and Alaska Native, we have no students registered in our program at this time.
And with regards to D-79 overall, what we do have, and what we can provide for you, is each individual program documentation, we can provide that immediately after this, but I can give you overall numbers of how many people we have enrolled, so Jackie can share that?
Yeah, so. So, overall, and total number of students served overall outside of the 21 and up, we have 20,203 enrolled of October 31st, we have 6,638.
And just to kind of give preference, what Jackie's talking about with October 31st, so there's some audits that are done at, as of October 31st, based on line, but once again, keep in mind, we have rolling admissions, our slogan is that your tomorrow starts today, and so every day is the first day at the, at D-79, and every day is the last day, but so because of that enrolling, when they did our snapshot, the public thing that you'll see is the 6,638, but we have 20,203 that we served as of today, sorry Jackie, continue.
Not a problem, and as we, just so you would know, also with regards to just a breakdown of our data, since I, Chair, you like our data, so we have our 6 to 8, our grades, we have 14%, grades 9 to 12, 56%, and our HSC is 30%. Also with regards to the demographics and the special needs of our overall district, we can break it down with regards to gender, our females are 38%, males 62%, we can go even further with regards to our students with disabilities, overall in our entire district, we have approximately 34% students with disabilities, and our MLL students are 20%. We can also break down ethnicity, if you would like me to, Honorable Chair.
I did ask.
Okay, thank you, so our Asian students, 6%, our Black students, 40%, Latino students, 45%, our White students, 6%, other ethnicity are 2%.
And your programming, can you give me a breakdown of your programs? So, we have 10 unique programs, and so the programs consist of, we have Co-op Tech.
I would like to know how many students.
How many students in each program?
Correct.
So, we do have that, so I'm going to flip from page to page to let you know, because we have it individually, if that's okay?
No problem.
Okay, so, we'll start with Co-op Tech, Co-op Tech has currently enrolled 1,000, well, this was, not currently, but this was from as of last year, because, remember, it's enrolling, so I can just give you the average, so last year, it was 1,096 that was enrolled in the spring, 949 for the fall, total number of students served was 1,354.
Okay, I have the pathways to graduation, number of students enrolled, total 4,993.
With regards to Passages, when we did our year total last year, was 375. With JSK, which is our only transfer school, Judith SK, it's 263. And then we'll go through, with regards to our YABC, it's 6,881.
With regards to Alternative Learning Centers, it's 4,374.
And then, with regards to life, 462. Restart, this is what we're missing.
Restart is our last one.
Did you get it? And with regards to restart, it's 1,069.
East River Academy?
Oh, sorry, East River Academy, got that. East River Academy, got it, East River Academy, oh wait, you know what, I just want to clarify, so there's two Passages, so one Passage is, because there's Passages North and there's Passage South, so the first number that I gave you for Passages, give me one second, the first number I gave you for Passages was 371 at one location, and that's our Brooklyn location, and then 220 for Passage Academy North, and that's for the location in the Bronx, and then East River Academy.
East River Academy, we have 630.
630, how many male and how many female, because I know they're separated by gender.
So, we had 15% female, we had 15% female and 85% male, and so those are all the tallies for last year, and so at the end of this year, we'll get the tally as well, because like I said, it's a, those, some of the programs that we've lifted are ongoing admissions and discharges, and so we want to be accurate with the information that we present, and that's done at the end of the year.
Yeah, and I know some of them are temporary as well.
Yes.
So, what, what impact did COVID have on your enrollment, participation, performance on D-79, and what type of support did you provide for your students, walk me through what D-79 looked like during COVID?
Yes, so we're going to start with adult education first, and then we'll peg back with D-79.
Thank you for the question, because it is very critical to the progression of our program at this time, in adult education, when we closed for COVID, we lost 89%, 50, I'm sorry, 86% of our students who were parents, because they had, and that means in our virtual setting, because we went on virtual once the schools closed, so we lost 86% of those parents, because they had students who were at home, no childcare, and in addition to that, students were struggling to try to understand and, you know, assimilate and, and learn how to use a computer, as opposed to being in a classroom, and the childcare facilities around the city for students who, for children who were younger than three were closed also, so we lost that population of students who were parents, we, our enrollment also decreased by 59%, because once we were not in the school buildings, our outreach and intake decreased by 59%. and intake decreased by 59%. So one of the things is our time on task with students also was reduced, because the state only gave us a period of five hours a week to work with students, which really translated into 36 minutes a day for us to actually work with our students online. The other thing that happened during the COVID intervention was that a lot of the materials that we had in our schools that we would normally have been able to address our students with, we were not able to access those. Many of the teachers had to learn how to work online, so it was a learning curve for everyone. However, we made the adjustment, but we lost a lot of students. But one thing that happened during the COVID period that was, helped the program was, they gave the high schools, they waived the regents for high school students. So what they did for us is, any student who had already passed three parts of the task test at that time, they were able to get their high school diploma. So the state gave us a waiver. But it made a dent in our attendance, made a dent. The good thing is that the state did not penalize us in terms of our EPI funding during the COVID period. So our funding remained the same. However, we lost a large number of students, and we're still in recovery, because prior to COVID, we had 40,000-plus students, and we've taken a dip, but we're beginning to climb. As of February, we're up 7% in terms of student population.
Were devices provided for the students to continue their learning? Since you did say there was a component online, how were they learning?
So initially, we didn't receive devices, full transparency, but what we did make sure, but we did get devices towards the middle and end of the pandemic. And then in addition to that, what we, because we recognized that we service a lot of adult learners, definitely customized the links and instruction that we were using, so that it would be accessible on their phones. So many of them were able to use their phones or the devices that were given to their children as a multiple means of receiving instruction. To echo Annette's point with regards to, we were happy to see that the state did make the accommodation for those who had already had three courses underneath their belt, three pass, three subset, subtest already passed to gain the HSC diploma. So we did see an uptick, that it went up to almost 2,025, if I'm correct, right?
And in addition to that, Superintendent, it also, if a student had passed three of the regents in high school, they also received the waiver for the high.
They received the ready for the high school diploma. So we were happy with regards to that. But to what Annette spoke about, we did suffer tremendously with regard to our attendance. However, we took a dip from prior having 40,000, and we dipped down to as low as 13, but we're now on the uptick, and we're at 27,000 from last year, and we're steadily increasing for when we get our totals this year.
Since none of your funding was taken away during EPE, well, how was that utilized?
So the funding that was, we were provided, because we weren't penalized for EPE, it was utilized to ensure that we had necessary software. We purchased things like essential education, ASSET, things that we could use as an online resource for our students, making sure that they have the supplies, and any type of technological gaps that we could satisfy, we did that as well. And then also just making sure with regards to having our teachers. So even though the teachers weren't visiting in person, we still offered these evening sessions, and those were still being paid for by way of procession.
How many devices did you buy?
I don't have that information.
You'll send it to me.
But I can forward you that information.
I'll email you. Thank you. As terms of, what is the, oh, you were going to give me a breakdown of?
So with regards to the impact of COVID on our other programs, it was pretty much, it echoed the same situation that was happening in adult education with regards to, I know with regards to East River Academy, passages in those programs, at some points, because of the outbreak, we had to cease instruction in certain cases, just for safety concerns. With regards to our other programs, that once in person, that we transferred to remote, students, many of our students have families that they support, and say the priority went to taking care of the home, taking care of the students, making sure that for those who were out of work, they prioritize with dealing with adulting in real life. And so what we have done upon return from the COVID and being back in person, we definitely made sure that we supported not only the academic, but the social-emotional. So we made sure that the resources that we were providing, the academic resources, had range, because we had students who had progressed, but we also had some students that weren't able to do any type of academic instruction at home. And so they were coming back at a lower level. So we definitely made sure that we purchased materials to support that remediation. We were intentional in also providing social-emotional, social-emotional support for our staff, because when you think about the grand scheme of things, we had students who not only lost work, had to stay home and take care of their families, but they also lost families as well. And that wasn't only the case for our students, but it was also for part of our staff. And Jackie could speak more about the SEL work that was done intentionally to make sure everybody was.
Does the SEL work also include your students, or it was just for your staff?
It was for both, both the students and the staff.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to share. Social-emotional learning is really my heartbeat, my passion. And, you know, after spending a lot of time working with the emotional dysregulative students in District 75, I came on board here in District 79 at the height of COVID. So once coming in, again, we realized the trauma, you know, that many of our students, staff, as well as the families have incurred because of this pandemic. So a large part of the things that we do at the onset of this pandemic was to really push the social-emotional piece. With regards during the height of COVID, we created a social-emotional handbook, by which, you know, all staff, as well as students, partook in, you know, different activities and exercises to assist us through some of the traumas that we were experiencing through the pandemic. The social-emotional piece continues to be a strong part of District 79, and a large part of what we've implemented into our everyday curricula here at D-79. So COVID, yes, opened the door for us to push more practices in the areas of social-emotional learning, but it's something that we realize is a continual expectation and a large part of the educational practices of what we do each and every day in the classrooms.
Thank you. Your adult education, how many adult learners are currently enrolled in your adult education programs? For example, adult basic education? Annette has that information. She'll provide about it.
Yes, I have it by, by, I'm sorry. I've forgotten that I didn't press my button to get on. In our, you went by subject. For this year, 23. In math, 29% of the total number of students are enrolled in math.
Not by subject.
I'm sorry, by subject.
Your adult basic education, how many students do you have overall?
Give us just one second. It's for the, you want how many people we have enrolled in ESL, one, ESL two, ESL three, ESL four. Just give us one minute.
Okay, we have that, those numbers, but I have those numbers in percentages, if you don't mind.
Okay.
And I'll have them to give us the numbers.
And I will email you, so I can get the breakdown.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
For the BE, basic ed high school equivalency classes, 19% of the total number of students are enrolled. For the ESL population, you'll notice this is a very large number. 10 years ago, the BE classes were the larger classes. Now, 73% of our students are ESL students, and 7% of our students are now enrolled in the CTE classes. And we'll get those double C.
And so what we'll do, we'll go a little bit granular, so that we can give you every single level, like the ESL one, ESL two, ESL three.
And how about your HSE?
HSE and BE, we have combined at 19%. But we'll give you a breakdown for the basic, as well as for the HSE.
Which is the ASE class? Let's talk about how the program looks. Currently, on the New York City Public's website pertaining to adult education, which contains only the basic information, directs anyone who wishes to enroll or visit one of the adult education hubs across the city. Prior to that, New York City Public Schools link to additional information, including course, adult education, listing of all the classes offered. Why has New York City Public Schools discontinued offering access to course catalogs on the website?
So that was minimal, great question. One of the things that I asked as well when we started. But what we, what we've discovered is that that was done, it was, when we peeled back the layers, we recognized that at sometimes at the website with all those information could be overwhelming. And so what we did was, we made it strategic, that it was streamlined with regards to the information about, just general information about our classes and our sites, and then you would be directed to go to the referral hubs. But we have had conversations, based on the feedback that you shared, as well as with the CPAC, on how we can make our website more inviting and informative, so I wouldn't always have to just go to the referral hub to just get basic key information. And so we've already started the partnership with DIIT, so that the website can be updated and reflected, so that it hits the needs, the immediate needs of the person that's looking, but as well as creating a link, so that you can go to a referral hub. But I'm also going to let Annette speak a little bit more on it.
One, it has to be user-friendly. Two, when can I expect to see the changes?
So we will definitely take your feedback, as we always do. So, and that's something we pride ourselves on. And when we have a timeline as when those changes will be implemented, we'll definitely share it with the committee.
Anybody from New York City Public Schools can tell me as to why the website looks the way it looks?
We can't speak about the entire website? We just hear?
No, I'm talking about your division.
Chairlady Joseph, I would like to add something to that part of the conversation, and not making an excuse for it, but we're in conversation.
We'll just have another hearing. They know I'm good for that.
Okay.
We'll have another hearing, just to answer the question. They know I'm good for that.
We're in conversation with DITT and, DITT to look at our website. And later, and there's one question I'm waiting for you to ask, and I want to talk about it, and then I'll give you further information on this, about where we are in terms of adult education in D-79 at this particular time in our lives. Because I wanted to say that the team that's sitting before you and other members of our team are new. The administration across the board is new this year, new superintendent, new deputy superintendents, new executive director. And we have looked at things across the D-79 adult education program, and we have, we determined at the very beginning, after doing research, the data, observations, evaluations, and having conversations with current and former employees, that there were things.
You should bring me in. I used to work for D-79. You won't like what I have to say.
Fun fact, because we just had this conversation with the team, we were looking at our sites, and what we recognized, we just said, what happened with Public School 6? Public School 6 was one of our highest performing spaces.
Yes, you were.
And we definitely, and they said, what changed? And I had to share with the group. I said, one of the teachers that was over there decided to run and actually won.
That's right. That's right.
A seat, so that we can make greater changes. And so, taking on the work that was already, like the pilot that was done with ex-council, ex-chair Mark Traeger, partnered up with the work that you did on the ground with building and flushing out a program, we are excited with what D-17 will look like, because we've already started the conversation with your team on how we replicate what happened at PS6 and have it a district-wide D-79 hub, where the students are being served and provided with access and resources, so that they can move forward. But we did just literally two weeks ago have that conversation about what happened to the numbers there.
At PS6, where we used to enroll over 500 students.
Yes.
We had six classes with 30 students.
You see them now, and they had an agreement. They said?
Yeah, and we had everything from exercise to computer classes to immigration via safety.
So we are excited.
It was a community school for adults.
And so, and that actually echoes what we're trying to do here at District 79, is how do we piggyback on that community school model that is from K to 12, and we expand it to the adult education world. And so we are happy to be in community with you and in collaboration, because you've already, with the work that was done by ex-chair Mark Traeger, and the work that was done with you already, prior to, as your experience with adult education teacher, and the seat that you have now, we are excited how we take what happened in your district, as a teacher, replicate it district-wide, and then replicate it citywide. So we're very enthusiastic about that.
I'm excited about that, too. And I'm still stuck on the website.
We will follow up on the website.
Only, only because you're dealing with a unique population, and you have to make it user-friendly. And even till today, all, New York City Public Schools always hear that, even now, I have to really shout them out, because some are rising, the registration process is so much easier. Versus the first year it came out, it was not user-friendly for my language, in my English language learners, my parents, who English is not their first language. You need to make sure that they can navigate the space. You want them to come into the space and come into your programs, but it has to be easy. If it's not easy, they're not going to come. They're going to hear word of mouth. Somebody else is going to tell them. But for them to go on the site, to really participate and really create that model that you're looking for, when they leave this district, leave the school district, is to be thriving citizens. To be able to navigate the system, get jobs, and navigate the school systems with their kids, you have to be able to provide them with the tools, and they should not be complicated.
And we echo your same sentiments, and what we feel most comfortable about, and that's what's something that Annette spoke to, is that we are a new administration, new leadership at the mayor level, as well as in, at the chancellor level. And the one thing that we can really pride ourselves is that this is an administration that has been collaborative. They have been speaking to the communities, and that's the charge. And it's also to ensure not only that we get things done, but we get them done right. And so that's what we're going to make sure that we do.
Councilmember Hanif?
Thank you so much, Chair, and really great to hear from you all, and your passion is just really powerful. So thank you for that. I have been enjoying just listening to all of these updates and programming information. So we know that adult and alternate, alternative education is critical to ensuring New Yorkers have equitable access to learning and workforce development opportunities. And I'm really, really grateful to Chair Joseph for her leadership on this topic, particularly in my capacity as the immigration chair, and knowing that we've welcomed nearly 60,000 asylum seekers. And even before the city welcomed asylum seekers, we know that in the pockets of our communities across the city, adults are looking for opportunities to continue learning. And so I'm really excited to learn more about D-79 and the ways in which we can be collaborative in ensuring that every single adult that wants to learn and have an opportunity to continue their education has the opportunity to do so in our city. The shelter-based coordinators have created critical linkages to educational opportunities for shelter residents and asylum seekers that are school-going age. And I'm interested in hearing more about how the admin is expanding and leveraging this platform to ensure young and older adults are accessing and succeeding in District 79 programs. And I apologize if my question is redundant. I did get here a little late. Is the DOE doing outreach about D-79 programs to asylum seekers at the following locations? If you could walk me through shelters for single adults, shelters for families with children, the navigation center, and then, of course, the accompanying satellite sites in some of our communities. And then, will funding be allocated to continue the critical work of shelter-based community coordinators in the executive budget? And if you could detail a little bit how the outreach looks like, and your partnerships maybe with the council member and other stakeholders?
Thank you so much for that question. And thank you for your work that you do with regards to the immigration and advocacy. As I shared, well, I shared at the beginning that we are the only district, and based on the needs of our adult education, from the conversations with our students, we actually have a team dedicated to immigration advocacy. And the purpose of that team is so that there's someone, because I know there's been an influx of asylum seekers across the city, but by nature and design of our program, we spoke to the fact that we have 190, our students represent 190 countries. And so we are always the first line of academic resources that are provided to asylum seekers, whether it be from different areas of the world, whether it be from the influx that we're having right now, from various countries. But we've always had a steady stream, and the need changes depend on the neighborhood. Sometimes it's Mandarin, sometimes it's Haitian Creole, sometimes it's Spanish, sometimes it's, you know, we have Bengali, we have a high African population that's coming in. So I just want to address the fact that we've always had the model of how do we service the needs of this diverse city, because that's always been our clientele. But definitely acknowledging that in some spaces, our numbers have increased tremendously with this great influx of asylum seekers. So we've been intentional to align our efforts with that of the city. And so what we've done is that we've partnered and actually reached out to many of the shelters that you've, the shelters that have been lifted with regards to, directly with students in temporary housing, so that we can have, to students in temporary housing and with shelters, so that we can create those spaces, we can create classes in those spaces. So in doing so, we're removing a different, another barrier of. So in doing so, we're removing a different, another barrier of sometimes students not being able to travel to another location to receive those services. What we've also done with students in temporary housing, just over at 131 Livingston Street, we have a class on Saturdays that's to our asylum seekers. And for those students that may have to travel out of their shelters, we provide MetroCards and we provide food and childcare. So even if they have to come out, that's someplace that they can do. With regards to getting the information out there and how do we make, we raise awareness, we do the conversations, well, sometimes we'll go in person or we'll do it remote.
In the shelters?
We'll go in person to the shelter or we'll do it remote with the shelter point, whichever one works best for that particular agency because we don't want to overstep. We want to just definitely be flexible enough to meet them where they are. And so we provide the information. Once again, our resources are free to them, so as long as they take advantage of it, it's the instruction with regards to the materials, the, the cost of the teacher, all of that is provided on us. It really is that we have a free service and we're just looking for the clientele to give it to.
Great. And then would you be able to share with me the kind of flyer that is shared with the shelters to get a better understanding?
So we have a flyer that we can share, but we actually also make sure that with any agency that we partner with, we have a basic flyer, but we always make sure that we, that they look at it and it customizes to meet the needs. So I'm going to give you an example. There's a space we wanted to open, a GED class, and we put college and career. And the, the agency that we were partnering with said, please, remove college because at this point it seems overwhelming for our group. And our groups just want the GED so that they can go and get a career. And so we take, so even though we have something that is semi-standard, we're always open to customization because we don't want the program to be overwhelming on paper. You know, we don't want it to seem overwhelming and unattainable. So we definitely work with the agency so, because they know the clientele best.
Absolutely. Could I have a few more minutes, Chair, to just wrap up my questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Could you share if, as a result of now seeing this expansion of the student population, if the admin will be investing in more shelter-based community coordinators? How many are there now and is there a plan to expand?
On that grand level with regards to the shelter base, I know we can't provide that information directly, but what we can say is that if there's a need, if there's a space that's been open, my team and I are ready and willing to serve and provide the services there.
Okay, great. And I look forward to the, the template flyer, just to take a closer look.
Just so you can see what it looks like.
And I appreciate that you all are flexible and like meeting...
We're flexible with the programming.
Yeah, meeting folks where they're at.
Yeah.
My next question, so the DOE launched new programs aimed at serving English language learners ages 16 to 21 at six existing transfer schools that previously did not focus on this population. However, these programs didn't receive sufficient resources to provide the intensive support that recently arrived immigrant students typically need, including bilingual social workers, robust training for school-based staff, and community-based wraparounds. I strongly support the advocates and their call for investing and baselining $3 million to add comprehensive services at these six new ELL transfer school programs. Are you able to commit to including this funding in the executive budget? And if you'd like to shed more light on these new programs, that would be greatly appreciated.
So the programs that you're referencing, we don't supervise those programs, but what you shared will be noted.
Do you know who does or under what agency?
It would be under the agency of DOE, but I am not the superintendent of those programs.
Are you able to share the contact information for this council to find out?
What we can do is what I will, I will definitely take your information and the ask.
Great.
And then I will forward it to the powers that be in central, and they will get in contact with you.
Thank you. And then earlier this month, the mayor proposed an additional 3% PEG cut that would worsen the cuts to the DOE budget proposed in the November plan. How would D-79 and adult education programs be impacted by these cuts proposed by the administration?
At this time, I don't have anything that I can share about that because I don't know.
I mean, you know, there's great fear given that we are, you're trying to meet the needs, and it's so heartwarming to learn just how flexible you all are with the specific bases of students. And so like as we prepare the city to really meet the needs of our newest New Yorkers, young and aging, and everyone in between who isn't a newcomer here but wants to continue learning, I would hope that the D-79 programs aren't impacted and that we are fighting both in the council and you all in your program, programmatic roles to push for more investments and immediate urgent investments for protecting these programs.
Councilmember, I can attest to you that the people that you see in front of you are some of the biggest advocates for the students of D-79.
I hear it in your voice. I appreciate it.
So we will take any support that's always given to D-79, but as, what I'll do is definitely take your concerns and I will forward it to the people that can address them.
Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you. Now you'll hear from Councilmember Viles.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to all of you for doing the work that you do with adults and students across New York City. I, I had a couple of questions around clarification. I understand that for the CTE classes that, that lead to certification and job placement, you may need a social security number or other documents to verify identity. What, what would those documents be?
So I know with regards to, right now pertaining to enrollment, you don't have to share or even have a social security to be enrolled. I do believe to get that final certification, what we've done is for those who don't have permanent residency, we have our immigration services support them in that. Because with many spaces, even if you don't have social, you have to show proof of residency and so forth to get your final certifications. So, but what we intentionally do, we don't hinder your opportunity to obtain these skills or exposure to these classes because it, based on your documentation status. But at the end of the day, when it gets higher up with regards to getting that final certification, they will need those documents that are required. And what we do on our end is just put them in, set our students up so that they're on the right track so they can obtain those necessary documents that are being required.
When you, when you say proof of residency, you mean an authorized letter, a phone bill? What, what exactly constitutes that?
When I, when I speak to proof of residency, what you'll find with many of the certifications that the students have to obtain, not necessarily a high school, but if things that require a social security, what we'll do is get them into the spaces. When I say proof of residency, I mean more so like, I don't know what they call it now, so if I speak out of turn, like a green card, like proof that you're, like proof of documentation.
You mean, you, you mean status?
Status, that's what I mean.
So effectively, an undocumented student could not get a certification for job placement?
So if you don't have a social security number, I know those things might limit you with getting that final certification, if I'm correct. But we, as our programming, we do not stop people from enrolling because they don't have a social security.
No, sure. You'll take them all the way up until the point.
We will take them all the way up until where they can.
To that point, right.
And so what we do also have in mind, so as they're working on their way to move up so that they can get this skillset, we have our advocacy team working with them, immigration advocacy team working on them so they can get their documentation in place so that when we cross that bridge, that I've finished my courses, that you know what, now you have your certification so you can move forward. We don't hinder people that because I don't have my documentation status, I can't even start the work or the process.
Sure, but ultimately, who controls the, the certification is controlled by another entity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the state. It's not us.
No, no, I figured that. No, thank you. Part of the reason why, why I was asking for clarification is I represent District 38, which is 50% foreign-born, 50% do not receive a high school, have a high school diploma, very large AAPI community, Chinese community from, from different parts, very large Latino, Mexican, South American community members for whom these programs would be absolutely critical. And in fact, you know, I could imagine enrolling in many of these programs, but that sole piece, if, if they cannot get the certification after investing all this time, that would be a huge barrier for them. So I'd love to figure out, how do we get around that barrier to make sure that the investment of time that they've made with your support and guidance, they can get their certification at the end of the day without status? You know, to get a green card can take up to 10, 15 years and thousands of dollars. Most people just lose steam after a couple of years. So, so that's a huge barrier that I'd love to talk, obviously that's not in your control, but something I'd love to understand better and not, quite frankly, not have as a problem.
We would definitely love to continue that conversation. As we kind of mentioned, what we've said and what we pride ourselves on is really customizing our programs to meet the needs of the community. And so to, we would definitely love, and we're taking down your contact information now so that we can extend that conversation with you, the superintendent, the key community stakeholders on two things. One, making sure that we have the programming in those spaces so that it's accessible to the community, it's customized, so if it's ESL track, whether it be a CTE track, whether it be a basic education track, that we have those services there. But then also, and I don't want to give more people work, but maybe even partnering with Councilmember Hanif, who, Hanif, who talks about the immigration advocacy, seeing how we could probably expedite some of the documentations and stuff that's going on or partner some of these students with advocates or attorneys pro bono so that we can expedite that work and show that, look, they're involved in a program, they're committed to, contributed to the society, and so, and this is the, this is the space that they're getting and that we can attest to, that they're getting the academics that they need. So that's just an option.
Yeah, thank you. And absolutely, I'd love to continue the conversation because I'd love to have, my, my district desperately needs your programs. We have 40 public education buildings in the district, so it's not for lack of space. We have a population that desperately needs all manner of services here and has very little, actually. We, we, very little. Can, can you tell me, another population, obviously, that you've, you serve is students in temporary housing or, or people in temporary housing? Do you know what percentage of folks that you serve are unhoused?
We do have that information for you. If you just give us a second, we do have that, though.
Yeah, sure.
Because we do have a large population of students in temporary housing. And we have a high population of our students who are eligible for HRA. So there is definitely a large percent of our students that are in need, and we'll get you that information. Just give me one second. For the overall district, it's 11%. And then for adult education, we're going to see if we have it specifically for adult education. But I want to just also keep in mind, whatever we aren't able to... For temporary housing. We don't have, so for adult education, we don't have those numbers because it's voluntary. They can share it if they want it. But for our overall programming, as of last year, it was 11%. That number might have shifted upwards because this year has been the first time back for a long time with regards to COVID and so forth. So we'll definitely update that information for you and provide it.
And again, selfishly, in, in my community, in my district, we have upwards of now 15 commercial shelters, right, which have no ability to allow folks to convene, to have space where they could learn onsite. And it's a real problem. These are not appropriate facilities for people to be in years and, and years on end. However, we do have public schools. So it just kind of speaks to the urgency of expanding these services into a community like ours to make sure that folks are getting as much support and pathways into opportunity as possible. We're not seeing that. So my last question, Chair, I'm sorry. Can you tell me how, what is the outreach mechanism into communities? I like to fashion myself a pretty astute person who's pretty nosy and wants to know about everything. And I'm learning very much about your programs through this hearing. So thank you, Chair Joseph. How are you doing outreach within communities around what you're, what you're offering?
So the first thing that we do, once again, we echo the same concerns that you're lifting is what we're trying to, that we, is what we want to address as well. So with regards to the outreach, our outreach starts off with foots on the ground. We give, we partner with schools, parent coordinators, CBOs. We have a team that'll go out to churches, they'll go to CBOs, they go to mosques, they go to synagogues, religious spaces, community-based spaces, we go to NICA houses. And so that's just to raise awareness. With regards to the partnerships and just to kind of, I just want to speak about what we're doing right now with council member, with, with Chair Joseph. What we've done is that we've create, we already had the conversation with the superintendent and the chair, and so we're in the process of scheduling community conversations. And so that'll happen with different sectors throughout the district. Having those conversations will now then, that information will give us what the specific need is. And then the reason why the community, the superintendents are involved is so that we have those conversations with the principals around what space is available. As you said, that there's 40 schools in your district, but with the 40 schools, we also want to make sure that who has the capacity to house this program. In some spaces, they might be at full of capacity and they don't have the capacity to house it in the daytime, but in the evenings, the capacity is a lot broader. But we also recognize, and this just speaks to the work that Chair Joseph has already done, is that there is a need for some morning classes. So that's why the superintendents were called in to have that conversation with their principals of where do we have this space? So even if it can't be at every school, we can have it at different centralized locations that we can pull that information in. Because what we found was that if we have a day space here and a day space there, our office, if we have a day site with one class here and one class there, our offerings are limited. We recognize that we have a wide range of students, so we want to have a space that has multiple classrooms so that we can have a program that meets the needs of all our multiple, of the various academic needs of our learners. After doing that, the goal is to take the information from the community conversations, and now we're outfitting the classes and the programming. And then we come in and we provide the resources, the instructional resources, we provide, if there's additional furniture that's needed, we provide the teacher. And the reason, once again, we have the council member as well as the superintendent involved in the conversation because we want to make sure that they're a part of the hiring process as well. So we're making sure that we have the most highly qualified teachers in those spaces to deliver an instruction and also ensuring that the conversation goes out directly to the principals, goes to the parent coordinators, and thereby getting to the parents.
Great. Thank you so much. And last question, last question. You may have covered this, and apologies if, if I'm asking something one of my colleagues may have asked. Have, for the last round of 4% PEG cuts, how have your programs been impacted? Was it impacted? You did not receive any cuts?
Not to my knowledge, we don't.
Have you received any cuts in this last fiscal year to your programming?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Viles.
Rare answer. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. I'm just going to circle back for another question I have. What is the current attrition rate for students for each program? How do current attrition rates compare to those in previous years?
We have that information. Just give us one second. So what I have right now with regards to, like currently, the attrition rate? Hold on a second. I just want to make sure I'm giving you the right information.
Don't worry, I'll write you. I always give homework after the hearings.
We're prepared. They're taking notes in the back.
Oh, they know. They know, they know.
The information that we have is for 2021, 20, 2020, for 21, 22, but we will definitely get back to you with the information for 23. I think the information that we already shared already was the 21, 22, so we'll cut back to you with the 2023 one. to you with the 2023 one, if that's okay. Okay.
We know where to find you.
I know.
What short, what, what short-term and long-term measures of success are available for D79 students in each program, including GPAs, high school graduation rate, and college enrollment rates?
Okay, so we have our own internal progress monitoring. As you know, we have 10 different programs, and each program has, ends with a different pathway. So some things that we have that's in common across all of our, all our programs is that we monitor attendance rate, we monitor, we give our own in-house student survey, we give staff surveys, we give pro-secondary enrollment rates. We give, we also measure something known as persistence because we do have students who may not be here the whole entire time. We measure persistence. We also measure our post-pass rate, our average credits earned, Regents exam rate, number of Regents exams passed, and that deals with our diploma-bearing programs. With the programs that are bearing, with the programs that are bearing HSE, we monitor the Tabe gains, the, Tabe math gains, Tabe reading gains. We monitor post-program attendance, post-program, post-secondary enrollment rates. With regards to our students who are the middle school, we monitor their performance on grade six, on, on the grade six to eight ELA test, on the grade six to eight math test, and we also monitor their ninth grade promotion rate. So, and I know I felt like I talked, I went around the corner, just to pretty much say that we have something in-house and it's customized based on the program, but the things in the areas that are germane throughout all, we make sure that we lift.
What are the post-enrollment rates?
The post-enrollment rates? We don't have the, I don't have the number here, but I can definitely give that to you.
Normally, after hearings, we'll email you a list of questions that were not answered so you can send us the answers. I'm going to piggyback off of what Councilmember Vila says. How many events have the community liaisons attend? I know you, you, you have a young lady, I'm just going to give her first name, Julia. She's amazing. She's amazing. She calls me everywhere, she tracks me down everywhere to make sure she's on every email list under the sun. I can't ask for a raise for her, but she's amazing. What community leaders or CBOs have you engaged with or are you looking to build partnerships with?
So we're looking to build partnerships, honestly, with anyone that's willing to build partnerships with us. But to the point of the council and what's been echoed and reiterated throughout is that in addition to having these partnerships with the schools and the local CBOs, we want to connect with the council members so that that conversation happens with the elective officials that there that have to connect. I always use you as our model. I use you and I use ex-Chair Mark Traeger with the importance of having the elective official involved in that conversation because you know, and I use the example, Zach that's over here at the mosque. You know that person that's at the school board. And so our efforts are strategic and we're conscious and we have eight people, but when I think about how much more and how exponential our work could be when we partner with the different agencies and the different community members, that's really what we're looking for.
Earlier, you talked about having a student, adult ed student advisory committee. How many students do you have and how often do you meet?
So we have anywhere from maybe 25 to 30 students that's representative of all of the different locations because they're, I don't want to say requirement, but we, the high recommendation is that, and what we ask of all our, I guess it is a requirement, we ask of all our principals is that they replicate that advisory group at their own school level. And so we don't limit, if the whole school board, the whole team wants to come and have a conversation with us, we invite them all. So it can range, so it can, it can be 15, so one representative from each school, or it can be 30, it doesn't matter. And we have it in-person and remote because we want to make sure that everyone has access to the conversation, to the conversation. And the conversations has really been aligned with the chancellor's pillars, that we want to make sure that when we sit from our end saying what we need to reimagine, that we have the perspective of the students. And many of the conversations that, and many of the work that's come out of it has been things that we probably didn't even have on our radar that they lifted. One of the things that I'm most proud of that came out of our adult education piece was one of our first ones where they talked about the need for increased technology. They talked about the need and Annette had that, because Annette was a former teacher, like literally on the ground as well, so shout out to the former teachers of adult education. And one of the things that we lifted is that if we acknowledge that the test changed and that the test is now all computer-based, how we allow an access for it. And so that was one of the first things that we did. They talked about the needs for advocacy. They talked about, I think one of the best things that is that the workshops need to be more geared on adults in. So the conversations with them is really about, these are the chancellor's four pillars, this is how we're interpreting them as a district, as students tell us what you need us to do, what gaps are there, and so we're working collaboratively in addressing those needs.
Well, thank you. Can you give me a breakdown of number of positions of staffs working in District 79 by program, including positions that are full-time, part-time?
We have that information for you. We will send that at a later date, if that's okay.
All right. So how many adult learners took the TASK High School Equality last year and what was the passing rate?
So Annette has that information and just, just, and that's a great question because that's something that we do track internally as well. And so just to give, just some historical context, the TASK now, the TASK was what we used up until December 31st, 2021, and then the state shifted to GED. And so there's been some differences with the TASK and the GED. So with the TASK, it was one test that you had to sit and take all of content areas, and now it's shifted to the GED module. The GED model, and so with that, they take it by content area, and I know Annette mentioned it earlier, if a student comes in with a Regents for math or with ELA, then they automatically get credit for that test area, and so they only have to take the other one. So what we're going to, the number that we're going to share with you is for the overall, all four parts, but we also have the data as to the pass rate by each content area.
Okay, I'm sorry. I keep forgetting this point. For the year 22, we had 2,629 students who took the task. We had 744 students who passed the task.
In its entirety.
And this year, our numbers have, we will have additional numbers by the end of the year because students are still in the process of taking, but to date, we've had 332 students to pass the test. And we'll get back to you by the end of June with a final number for up to June 30th.
And I just want to share, once again, that's in its entirety. What we've also done, because we do recognize and we want to take full advantage of the fact that students can take, they don't have to sit and take the test all at one sitting. What we've offered is many of our students who may not be BE, HSE-ready with regards to math and reading, we have, we are allowing our students in the lower-level BE classes to sit for the social studies and the science content so that they at least get that underneath their belts, and so they can focus more attention on the math and the ELA because that tends to be the harder components to pass. But our pass rates individually are higher now that we can focus on different content areas as opposed to all components at one time.
At one time, and it's now two days because you're back to the old GED model.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're back to the old GED.
So how many?
Annette wants to share.
I wanted to give you some of the percentages of students who pass the individual parts because as Superintendent was saying, when they pass one part, it encourages them to prepare themselves for the next piece. Because sometimes it takes a student maybe a year or two to pass.
Yeah, that boosts their confidence.
Yes. So in the year 22, 22% of our students pass the math test, which is the most difficult piece for them. And in the science area, 35% of them pass, which is another difficult area. Social studies, 46% pass. And in our ELA, reasoning and writing, 37% of the students pass in that particular area.
And once they pass that, what is the next step? What do you do to continue? Let's say they decide to go to college. Do you provide support?
Absolutely, we provide support. We've even created a bridge program for D79 that when our students finish the, when they finish and they pass the HSE so that they have a smooth transition, so we have an internal bridge program. And we've also reached out to CUNY. I want to say, I forget the acronym, but there's also a program where we can give like a smooth baton pass to students that once they got their HSE, that they can get into that bridge program so they're acclimated and ready to go with regards to CUNY for those who are interested.
How do you, how do you track those students? Let's say you, I know, I usually track my kids and see where they are, what they're doing. How do you track those students once they leave you?
So through our collaboration with CUNY, sometimes it's with the phone call. So we have various ways dependent on the program. I can speak to, just even when we think about not only adult education, but just thinking about D79 as a whole, one of the things that we've invested in is a transition coordinator at Passages, like an administrator in transitions, because we definitely recognize that that's a work stream that we want to have supervised and efficient so that we make sure that not only are our students well-cared-for when they're with us, but then they're able to go. And funny enough, that was one of the questions and one of the asks from our student advisory group for our over-21 and under-21, that we create a dynamic that even if I leave, I can always come back and get help, almost like an alumni group, and get help with college and career readiness, writing resumes, building up skills, our skill capacity. So that's something that we're definitely this year investing a lot of time in.
Do you do any job placements?
We are, we're actually in conversations for job placement opportunities. Right now, we do do job placement opportunities because we, Co-op Tech especially, has strong partnerships with different industries and organization, but we're looking to strengthen those partnerships. And so we have preliminary conversations with many different agencies, and we're hoping that we can have something finalized and something that we're able to publicize and make public by the end of the year.
Great, thank you. I'm just going to go back, I just digress a little. How do these HSE test-taking pass rates compare to those over the past 10 years? Have you seen improvements? Have you seen?
We've, we've seen tremendous improvements, just to kind of speak on when, in 1617, the HSE pass rate was 230. And so the, once adult education became underneath the umbrella of D79, it's been a trajectory of an upward climb. We went from 230 to 989 by 1908, by 1819, and it's been an upward trajectory from that. I can give you specific numbers. So in 1617, 1617, and Annette's going to back me up to make sure I'm giving the right information, 1617 was 272, then it went 1718 to 336. 1819, when it became under D79, it went to 989. 1920 went to 1579. 2021, we also will remember, we're given that disclaimer that they didn't have to sit for the test because that was that COVID year, so it went up to 2,000, 252. It's now at 744 because of the waivers and the transition of the test. But as Annette said, we have many people that are ready to take the test, and so we're looking forward to the numbers that we'll get by the end of the year.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Ressler. Okay, thank you. So why did New York City Public Schools decide to consolidate OACE within D79? And how has this impacted the delivery of adult education programs?
So I was, I'm not really, like, so with the why, I'm not, can't really speak on that, but I can tell you the benefits of what happened since the consolidation happened.
Who's going to tell me the why? It's a question.
I wasn't here, honestly.
So may I just say, I think that what we have to do is to go back and gather some information for you, to bring to you, because although I was teaching in the program at the time, I was not privy to the information about why the program was combined and put under the umbrella of D79.
I think that's a simple question. No one from New York City Public Schools can answer that?
We didn't say that.
No, not yet.
Okay.
New York City Public Schools is here. Nobody can answer?
It was a different administration, and so, but what we can speak to.
It is yours now.
Exactly.
It is yours now. It's been 15 months. I've been here for 15 months as well. So it's a good question. Why, why, why is there merger? Companies merge together because there's a benefit. There's a, there's a reason why. Does it, no one ever gets up and just say, oh, let's just get together, people? It doesn't work that way. So I asked the question, I should be able to get an answer. If not, New York City Public Schools will write the answer for me.
So what I will, what I will definitely speak to is, as you just mentioned in your statement so eloquently, there's always a benefit to it. And so I can tell you one benefit, the benefits that have produced because of this partnership of D79 being underneath, adult education being under D79. I shared the data with you, there was immediately, once we, once they were under our jurisdiction, one of the things that happened immediately was that we were able to pool our resources and allow, and offer them not only to the under-21 population, but the over-21. So they were able to gain access to our professional learning that we gave to our students, to our teachers across the district, as well as to our principals. We, they were able to hit into our resources, so school locations that, so locations that we had D79 programs in, that that was our building, that was space that they were able to have access to with regards to our life program. They now were considered students of D79, and so they were able to access life, and so childcare was addressed with that one. With regards to, just with regards to the level. So with regards to the, just the initiatives around emotional, emotional supports and learning, they were able to benefit from that. So it was extending, it was taking resources that were often reserved for our under-21 and now being able to extend them to our over-21. And then just even more immediate, because as you said, we just, we are new to this role, but we are being very intentional of how we're restructuring. Annette is going to speak a little bit more about things that we have been intentional about, not only externally but internally around the structure and who we have in place.
Earlier, I had referenced some of the many changes that have taken place in the program since Superintendent Esperance and, and her team came on board in the summer of 2022. One of the things that I want to say, and we noticed as we looked at the literature and the historical progression of the program, is that there were many things that did not exist at that time that you're referencing. And so after a comprehensive review of our data and the observations and the conversations with former and current staff, one of the outstanding things we noticed was the fact that there was no curriculum for adult education. So in 2022, a team was formed, the curriculum team, that developed a curriculum called the D79 2022, 2023 Curriculum. We have not adopted that curriculum, but we have begun to use it as a focal point to make changes around curriculum and instruction in adult education and in D79. So what we did, we have also, we looked at it, we did not have a person at the central level who could direct and work with the schools around curriculum and instruction. So we added to our team a director of curriculum and instruction. In every school now, we have an assistant principal who is assigned as the assistant principal for curriculum and instruction. So we have a focal point in the school that we can work with to ensure that what we expect, we can inspect, and we can work with them and ensure that it's happening. Every school now has at least one instructional facilitator with a plan to move forward by September with a second instructional facilitator who will be in charge of math, which is an area that our students are weak in. Just as the high schools have to prepare the students for the Regents exam, we realized we needed to be, prepare a plan that was strong enough to help us to prepare competitively our students for the GED test because the current GED test is very different from the GED test that existed before. And so we needed a team of people to work together from the central office to the schools to make sure that our students are instructed in those competitive areas and that they learn the strategies and skills that they need. We looked at the schools also, and we said, you know what? There are areas we need to focus on, we need to identify the four areas that we're going to focus on first. We decided to focus on curriculum and instruction. We decided to focus on the technology, and as the superintendent told you earlier in the conversation, we did a survey across all of the schools and determined what the schools needed to bring them up to a current level with technology. We set the funds aside, the computers are coming in, they're being assigned to the schools. And so by September, every student will have access to a computer during, throughout the school day. Student has to be fluent in technology in order for them to pass the test now. So that is our goal, to make sure they have that access. And that was one of the points that Superintendent told you earlier in the conversation, we Um, and that was one of the points that superintendent brought up, that the students mentioned when they come to the student council meetings. First thing they told us, we need access to computers. And the other area that we looked at was budgeting because the budget is supposed to be driven by curriculum and instruction, not by other things. And so we are refocusing our conversation, our observations and our plans on how the curriculum drives the budget so that we make sure that we have the best teachers, the best instructional supplies and materials. And when we were talking earlier, you mentioned the fact, what is D seventy-nine slash adult education doing? We know that there's a process involved to move from where we are to someplace else. We want to become competitive not only with, in ourselves, but with K twelve. And so we are going into some collaborations with K twelve, the dyslexia piece at D seventy-nine and adult education. We are piloting dyslexia because our students drop out of school. Well, some of those problems that they originally dropped out of school, they bring them with them when they come to us. So what we're doing is we're gonna use the dyslexia program to help us identify some of the gaps that students may have so that we can enhance D seventy-nine and adult education with some of those specialists and other pieces of programs that our students need in order for them to move uh, more smoothly along the line to get to the high school diploma that they need. So we identified those four areas. We decided that we need a unified curriculum and we're hoping that we'll be able to move and, and determine a curricul, uh, unified curriculum by September. Hopefully it would be the D um, seventy-nine twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three because it has a lot of components, resources. It's an online curriculum and teachers will be able to access it as well as the students will be able to access parts of it um, for their um, at home and in school. So what we're doing is we're trying to, to create a structure that will not allow us to move back to whatever the situation was in the prior. We decided to do it from a programmatic perspective. We now have teachers actively involved. Every component of our programs now have, have a professional development uh, calendar.
Yep.
And they've been doing, uh, we started back in February. We have a new attendance policy in place. We have a data team in place. Um, the data team headed by our data directors across the board. What we do now is we keep up with our data. We have what we call a Data Wednesday. Every two weeks, we meet with the data teams in each school to make sure that everything is up to date and current. So if there's any support that they need, we know right away in two weeks how to do it, how to support the schools with their data. So we are moving lots of things. And I just, there is, and goodness, the print is a little bit small, but I'm gonna try to read this to you. Some of the things that we have, goodness, Glenda, your eyes are younger than mine. But we have uh, an adult education attendance policy. Would you read those?
I'm gonna read it. Whoa, okay.
Come on, girl.
It's very small, I'm gonna give it to Jackie, but what I'm gonna say with regards to, I, I, and what um, Annette said so eloquently, is that the work that we're doing, the theme of our district this year, this work this year, and we're gonna continue deeply on that, is around coherence. At the end of the day, it shouldn't matter what borough you go to, what site you go to, the standard and the high level, the high standard and the high expectation will be the same and it will resonate throughout. And so that's been the biggest shift of having adult education underneath D seventy-nine, is that it's coherence and it's standards aligned and it's continuing that baton pass from that K to twelve space of, okay, it didn't work, but we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we're addressing your needs so that we can have you cross over those, um, cross line. Oh, oh, the power of electronics.
I was able to see-
New York City Adult Education Attendance Plan. We created LTPS Funding Formula and Technology Plan, um, School Budget Overview Quota Two Review Plan for NICID, Intake Hub Professional Development. These are just some of the initiatives and things that we're doing to make sure that there's coherence underneath adult education. Data Professional Development, Curriculum Instructional Professional Development, Case Manager Professional Development and Data Wednesday Check-Ins. And what Annette spoke to was just the fact of making sure that the structures that we have in place, the same way there's oversights on other different levels, having that oversight being intentional, but also supportive on the level within. And so that's the work. And that's the benefit.
That's some of the whys. Um, so we, we've, we've heard from advocates and teachers um, that also if, for example, pre, pre-pandemic, if a literacy, if a student was a literacy level one, students were being referred to library services rather than being serviced by you. Um, is that still happening? If so, why?
No, that should not be the practice. That should not be the practice at all. And um, if that is happening, if you still hear from advocates, please um, direct them to us so that we can address it. But that should not be happening.
Earlier in your testimony, you talked about the life um, program being under D seventy-nine. What's the budget for this program for the twenty twenty-three school year?
I do not have that information, but I can forward that to you.
How many early childhood seats do you have?
Um, with regards to um, our life programs, I know we have thirty-two life programs and we have the capacity depending on each program to have anywhere from sixteen to um, twenty students depending on the age and the configuration. So I would say approximately five hundred, five hundred plus students.
And how many were utilized this year?
Um, this year, um, I know that we have, and it changes because it determines need on the pregnancy and so forth, but I know we had eight sites that weren't utilized. And with some sites, the reason they're not being utilized is because of regenerative, because the need is no longer there. There were some sites that were open years ago, like this program has been around since the seventies. And there's some sites that were open um, based on the needs of the community and the needs of the community has changed. And then we have also some sites that we have one location that it's housed in a building that doesn't align itself because it's now charter schools that are in that building and their rules for security and safety don't align. Let me not say that. Um, there's a misalignment with um, regards of expectations on the building and so that's why we don't utilize that space. Um, what I will share is that um, the beauty of the life program, as you know, is that um, it's to prevent the interruption of instruction that tends to happen when a student um, has a child, whether they be of teenage years and they had a child, um, and they have to pause that instruction to take care of a, a baby. And so the goal of that is that whether it be the um, male parent or female parent, or even if it's an adult learner, that's one of the benefits again of adult education being underneath us. As long as you're a NYC P, public school student, you can utilize that space. And the goal is that, the intention is that you drop off your child and then you go on to school and you continue the learning.
Superintendent? What is the budget for that program in upcoming years? And the empty seats that were not filled, how many was that?
Um, I know that there were eight locations that didn't have sites. So we have four hundred, right now we have four hundred and sixty-seven. So if we said it was five hundred plus, I would say maybe a hundred or less seats that weren't utilized.
Are those seats being transformed into some other type of seats? Or those seats are gonna be, what's gonna happen to those seats?
So what's being explored is definitely making sure that um, the same way COVID hit all the other programs, some people left. And so what we are doing actively is informing um, high schools and middle schools, this is, of, of what our program offers. And um, we've also set up a situation where our case managers are helping students who come to us um, that wanna have their children here expedite that program with regards to recommendation, um, with regards to immunization, um, health things so that we can expedite the program to have the seat. We're also revisiting um, our requirements for what it means for entry level because um, we looked at the past of what it was and those things um, some, I don't wanna say outdated, but those things are not real, um, we wanna update them to make sure that it's really meeting the needs of our students. And so um, and that we're timely in our responses with them.
And um, we talked about shelter-based coordinators earlier. This council funds twenty-five of them. So we wanted to find out, um, are any of them doing outreach for the life programs?
I don't know, but I will definitely take that information back and so that we can take advantage of that resource that the council has.
So what is the budget for the program for the upcoming school year?
We don't have the budget at, here right now. Um, but when we can have that information that we can share, we'll definitely forward it.
Okay, thank you. Um, students with disabilities enroll in D seventy-nine programs. What numbers and percentage of students enrolled in D seventy-nine programs have IEPs? Uh, please provide a breakdown by, by program.
All right, so Jackie will take care of that. The breakdown with regards to IEPs? Okay.
Thank you for the question, Chair Joseph. Again, as I mentioned before, besides being passionate about social motion learning, um, the area providing the needs for our students with disabilities is also a passion of mine. With that being said, right now in our district, we have approximately thirty-four percent of our students are special ed students.
Breakdown by program, please?
Okay. Um, I'll break down by program. Okay, I have to go through each one. But we have uh, thirty-four percent, and let me go to each one.
We'll go to each one.
Yeah, we gotta go to each one. So I'm gonna start with our P two G.
Okay. Well, we have it right here, number eighteen.
All right, okay. Okay, our P two G percentage is twenty-nine percent.
With regards to- With regards to Co-op Tech, we have forty-six percent.
With regards to our Passages program, we have fifty-eight percent.
At which passages is that, north or south?
And that is Passages North.
And at Passages South, we have fifty-nine percent.
At our ERA program, we have fifty-five percent.
And at JSK, we have thirty-eight percent. At our YABC, we have twenty-five percent.
At our Alternative Learning Centers, we have forty-two percent.
And at life, we don't track the SWDs. We can give you the demographics of this, of the parent, but of the students because that's still early childhood. It's just based on um, what the parent would share. But for the parents of the students, it's nineteen percent of our parents who students we serve have um, IEPs.
And our Resort Academy, we have thirty-eight percent.
What percentage of the students with IEP enrolled in D seventy-nine programs um, have IEPs that recommend placement in program D seventy-five programs versus what percentage have IEPs recommending D one to D thirty-two?
All right, we have that.
Okay, the percentage breakdown, um, Chair Joseph, is from our D seventy-five schools. Um, we have six percent. From our District One through Thirty-two schools, they're eighty-six percent. And seven percent come from charter schools.
What special education program and services are offered at D seventy-nine sites?
So we have Pathways to Graduation has sets and mandated counseling. YABC has ICT and sets and related services. JSK has ICT and sets and related services. Passages has ICT and sets and related services. East River Academy has ICT sets and related services. Resort has sets and related services. And ALC has sets and related services.
In your special education support, um, what special education support is available in D seventy-nine apprenticeship programs?
We have over two hundred and fifty students participating in our apprenticeship programs.
And what support do you provide for them?
So the supports that we provide for our students with disabilities is not only um, with regards to our apprenticeships, it's what we do overall. We definitely recognize that the students come at different academic levels. And so the first um, line is always to unpack their IEPs. And um, when, many of them, when they transition to D seventy-nine, we create something known as an SEP. And what's, can you give me the acronym?
Yes, um, Special Education Program.
Okay, and so we customize a program for them that we make accessible to all the students, all the teachers and staff that will engage with them to ensure that the um, the work that's being given is made accessible and it's based on their needs. In addition to that, we have a team at the district level that we created this year, because before it was just pockets. We created a special, a special education team that um, Jackie oversees. And she, um, and they work collaboratively to ensure that we're adhering to the mandates and as well as providing professional learning. And so one of the structures that we've done across the board with regards to special, professional learning is that we've tiered it. We have monthly check-in with our liaisons. We also provide workshops that are targeted based on the observations that we see and from what assessment data. And then we also, I, we also provide in-the-field support um, so that we make sure that that work is targeted and it addresses the needs of that community. And so we have a team, um, a, a wonderful team with probably over fifty to sixty years combined experience um, leading the work and making sure that whether, once again, you're in East River Academy or you are at the um, adult education in Long Island City, the expectation around what um, good instruction for special education is being presented, it's being taught, it's being um, and the teacher's capacity of being met so that it, it reaches those, um, it reaches the students.
Um, our, what professional development is, in support, if any, does the New York City Public Schools offer to educators in D seventy-nine programs regarding transition planning for students with disabilities?
So um, yes, we, right now with the mandation from the Transitional Office, you know, everyone in our um, district program, everyone in our district, they have received that mandated training. Besides that, we also partner with the Transitional College Career, I think it's a TCA, TSAT, that's what it is, yes. We also partner with them as well for continual training for all of our staff.
And they're very, um, the Special Education Department in Central are very accessible and um, definitely willing and are part of the charge of making sure that this most vulnerable population receives the needs that they have.
Good, thank you so much. Um, our English language learners enrolled in your D seventy-nine programs, what number, what number percentage of students enroll in D seventy-nine in language, English language learners or students learning English? And can you provide a breakdown by program?
Okay. So at a glance, we have, with regards to our L population, we have twenty-five percent um, of our students are Ls. When you think about the youth program, that's our under twenty-one and our over twenty-one, when we talk about the adult learners, is seventy-three percent. Um, with regards to the internships and apprenticeship, we have three hundred and seventeen L participants, students that are partic, that participated in it. And then what we'll do right now is just give you the numbers for each program specifically.
Yes, Co-op Tech, we have a total of twelve percent.
All right, and then at um, Pathways to Graduation, our total is um, and we've broken it down to our newcomers at fifty-eight percent and our long-term Ls, which is, which is uh, I'm sorry, we have overall thirty-eight percent. And within that thirty-eight percent, we have newcomers at fifty-eight percent and long-term Ls at forty-two percent for our Pathways to Graduation.
Our Passages Academy North, we have um, eight percent.
And at Pathways Academy South, and that's the one in Brooklyn, we have six percent.
At our East River Academy program, it's seven percent.
At JSK is five percent. And in our other programs, at the YABC, it is eighteen percent.
At our Alternative Learning Center, it is eight percent.
And once again, this information that I'm giving you with regards to life um, deals with our parents. Um, it is thirty-seven percent of our parents.
And our Resort Academy, it is thirty-two percent.
How many students you have in Co-op Tech that have IEPs?
Uh, forty-eight percent. And that was, it's been intentional um, to, over the past years, to increase that percentage.
And when they are not at Co-op Tech, do they stay home half of the day?
So the way that um, Co-op Tech's work is that we partner with students who are post-secondary. So there's some students who've already graduated from the program. And so they come in because it's that middle space that, okay, I have a diploma, but I don't have the skill set. So that um, group normally comes in the morning where we'll have a large percentage of students that are coming in to build their college and career readiness. And then the afternoon is when you'll see many of our shared instruction. And so what will happen is those students will go to their homeschools in the morning And so what will happen is those students will go to their homeschools in the morning, and then they come over the co-op tech in the afternoon. And so what we found is that it's a, we're getting some as early as tenth, ninth and tenth grade. We have our D seventy-five partnership, and so that's how it works. So it's shared instruction.
Okay, good, thank you. And how do, how do New York City Public Schools ensure that students with disability get accommodation and support they need to participate in a co-op tech?
Thank you, Chair. Just to, once again, reiterate with regards to our co-op tech program, what we do there, it's a lot of shared instruction. So the schools that, we have actual, in our D seventy-nine's co-op tech program, there's a special education coordinator who works with liaisons from the sending schools. And together, they, you know, take a look at the IEP, what's necessary. At times, they may bring over a paraprofessional to assist those students that come into our programs from shared instruction.
Okay, thank you. And to support your ENL in your co-op, how do you support your ENL in your co-op tech program?
So those mandates, once again, so the mandates, if you're, if you're under-twenty-one, the mandates that hold true at your homeschool are still in effect. And so what will happen is that they'll still receive their mandates at their homeschool. But when we, it's raised to us that these are students with ENL, whenever possible, having things in their home language, depending on where they are. So having things translated in their home language. What we've also found, because of the communal feel of co-op tech, many of the students who are well-versed in one language, they serve as like guides, and so they'll turn and talk and provide access like that through conversation. But they're definitely flagged and earmarked so that we make sure that we're making the work accessible. And another beauty of co-op tech is that many of the work is hands-on. And so you might get a couple of documents here and there that you're filling out, but the work is hands-on. Like the teacher literally sets it up, okay, now let's start doing the work. And for our English language learners, and you know, this is something that we raise, it's not necessarily that they have a disability, it's the barrier, it's the language. But if you give them access to the tools, as we mentioned earlier, we have some students who come in over with an engineering background, that they had been doing that from young. And so being able to get immersed into work, we found that many of them thrive because they're being asked to show as opposed to writing in the English language, which they have the capabilities of doing.
Yeah, because they come with the set skills, just transferring the skills over to the new language. Your Pathway to Graduation, let's talk about that a little bit. How many and what percentage of your students enrolled in the Pathway to Graduation have IEPs?
So I can give you the overall percentage, and then Jackie will share what's done with them. So, oh, you, no, Jackie, you can do all, you wanna do it all? Okay, so based on last year's overall data, twenty-one, twenty-two, we had twenty-nine students with disabilities, students classified as students with disabilities. And Jackie will share a little bit more insight of what's done and how we onboard them with the IEP process and structures.
So when I came on board, we were under a CAP review at the Pathways to Graduation. So prior to me coming on board, I believe the first year, which was two thousand and nineteen, the CAP review first started, I do recall from my research and coming on board and getting apprised of where we were in that process. It started in Brooklyn, there were probably three sites that was a part of the pilot to get the CAP review moving. The following year, twenty-twenty, of course, you know, COVID hit, but during that time, though, that's when I joined D seventy-nine and we began to expand a little bit by branching off, working together with the state. We then opened up, you know, each hub, our large hubs. We then, you know, graduated to that point in which everybody there had IEP implementation. The following year, which was twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, what we did, which I'm very excited to share, was we created C E C teams in each of our boroughs. And what we did alongside with following the state expectations, in the beginning of the year, from September to February, we did a fifty percent expectation of all P two G students having IEPs. And our goal, which we did meet, was by the end of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, two school year, we'll be at hundred percent of all students having IEPs implemented. This school year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, is our very first year in a full fold-out with having our C E C teams fully rolled out in all of our boroughs. And all students coming into Pathways to Graduation program are coming in with, you know, expectations of having IEPs implemented.
In twenty-nineteen, the state education issued a compliance assurance plan, finding that the DOE was violating students' rights by requiring students with IEP to waive their rights to special education program services upon enrolling in the P two G program. In this initial response, the DOE agreed to provide certain related services to students in P two, P two G programs, but maintained that the requirements of the Individual Students with Disability Education Act didn't apply to students who enrolled in P two, P two G programs. Is the DOE currently holding annual IEP meeting for students in P two G programs and implementing their IEPs?
Yes, and that's the work that Jackie just spoke about, was the, in response to this. I personally believe, and I wasn't the one that hired Jackie, but I definitely believe that's why she was brought on for her expertise. She comes with thirty years of experience in the D seventy-five world, but just with regard to special education and the importance of not only writing the IEP correctly, but also making sure that it's being implemented with fidelity. And so she has led the work collaboratively with a team of, of very strong special education specialists of making sure, one, that we're adhering to the CAP, and then we're also doing a strategic and steady rollout with the phases to ensure that the work that we do benefits the academic and social outcomes of our students.
Of course. What, what special education programs and services are offered at each P two G sites? What programs available in other schools that are not available in P two G's programs?
At our P two G sites, Chair Joseph, we are offering sets as well as mandated counseling. What is not offered are fifteen-to-one classes, but our class sizes are also very small at our Pathways to Graduation programs.
And what's being offered at the other programs versus there is that, like, with our YABCs, we do offer ICT. And that's the fifteen-to-one-to-one reference. So at YABC, JSK, Passages, East River Academy, we do offer the ICT models.
What procedures do you follow when you do not offer special education program or service mandated by a student's IEP?
We issue R S As.
R S As, right.
And you have a D seventy-nine and D seventy-five partnership. How many students are currently served by the D seventy-five and P two TG partnership?
Chair Joseph, currently we have fifty-five students that are being served in this partnership.
And we do have a strong partnership with D seventy-five and D seventy-nine, not only on the level of the school levels. We also have a strong partnership with Ketla Lucant, who is the superintendent of D seventy-five. And then we've also, and Jackie and Stacy facilitated that partnership where we literally brought the materials straight to the teachers so that they were aware. The goal is to always, one, make sure we're all on the same page, and then raise awareness.
And how do you, how does the New York City Public School publicize this partnership to families? How do families find out about this program?
A lot of it, the principals, you know, do recommend to the families about the partnership between D seventy-nine and D seventy-five. We may have a student that, let me give you an idea of what the partnership may actually look like. In some of our programs, say we have, the students are coming in, they're getting their services from D seventy-five related services. They may come with a paraprofessional, they may come into our D seventy-nine program to be able to work towards their GED. A lot of this comes from principal recommendations to the families. We also have our referral centers that are also set up that can then direct the families step-by-step how they can also integrate into our partnerships.
Thank you. How can families and students apply to the specialized P two, P two G program? How do they apply?
To apply to our P two G programming is the same way we created hubs for adult education, which is a direct replica of the family welcome centers that are done for the K to twelve. We've created referral centers for Pathways to Graduation. So there's one in each borough, and there's two in Brooklyn. And so they liaise with the counselors and community members, the counselors at the home high school, so that it's a smooth transition.
Do you plan on expansion, expanding this program? Do you plan on expanding this program?
Pathways to Graduation?
Yep.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's one, that's been part of those conversations that we've been having with the community stakeholders as well as with superintendents of the need to, not only, like, we definitely, and this is part of the work that we're already doing with, with you in District Seventeen, not only looking at the over-twenty-one population, but also looking at our under-twenty-one population. And I know we've already started conversations about maybe even having a hub in Seventeen to see how that model works as well. If there's a hub and then the partnership with the elective official and the superintendent, how do we increase awareness and our outcomes? So we're really looking forward to this pilot work that we're gonna do this year because it'll definitely be a model of what can be replicated across the city.
And if I may add, Chair Joseph, just two weeks ago, myself and the special education team had a meeting with all of the D seventy-five principals, again, sharing with them all of the opportunities that they have partnering with D seventy-nine and giving the students their opportunities to go towards their GED.
And it was well-attended.
Very well-attended, yeah.
One of the things I know, I hear from D seventy-five, there's no transition plan in place for our students once they stop. We want to make sure that's also afforded to them as well. What language support do you provide for students in P two G who's learning English?
So the language supports that we provide are similar with those we do for adult education because it's still that pathway of high school equivalency. So we definitely make sure that we have resources that are translated into languages that are accessible for the student. And in the opportunity that we can't translate the items, we've really, we're really, we, we are strengthening our partnership with the work of the M, the Multi-Language Learners Department in New York City Public Schools. And so we've already partnered with them, where we have partnered with a consulting company that's used by New York City Public Schools Support Ed. And their work is research-based and grounded in a text that many of the founders worked. And so the goal is to build the capacity of our teachers, make sure that the resources that they're being provided with are vetted. And, and we're really particularly making sure that the curriculum is adult-friendly. In many cases, what you'll find is that even though, because our average age for a Pathways to Graduation is nineteen. And so I might come in at nineteen, but might be functioning on the third or fourth grade level. We want to be confident that the material that we're providing is relative to their age bracket. And so that's the work that's being done right now to ensure that the supports are there. And we're intentional, when we provide our supports, that we dispel some preconceived notions in some places that what you do for the students with disabilities can just be transferred to the students who are classified as MLLs or Ls. We definitely always make sure that we clarify that because I cannot speak English doesn't mean that I have a disability. It just means that I need access to the materials in a different way. And so we're intentional of visiting our math classes in particular to make sure that they're not being stifled or low-level materials not being produced to them simply because they don't have access to the language. And we found in lifting that and making teachers as well as principals aware of that, in one of the classrooms that I visited, a plan that was intended to go the whole year became something that was done in a month, and the students started moving a little bit further. So that's the work.
Good, thank you. Earlier, you talked about your dyslexia program. When do you plan on enrolling that out?
In adult education, as well as, and Jackie will tell you about the D seventy-nine piece. We've had our initial meetings, as a matter of fact, we have a meeting next week. We've identified the school that we're gonna be piloting the program in. And over the summer, we'll be doing professional development for staff that will be selected to participate in the program. And the rollout time is slated for September.
September of this year, thank you. And how do you, how are you recruiting the educators to do this kind of work?
We're gonna be working with the, what is it, Jackie, the Department of...
So we're working, like, I mean, it's dyslexia department, but that's coming from the department.
Yes, there are two departments that we're working with, and they are going to help us to identify teachers for the program. And they are going to give us additional funds by giving us, providing staff to us to provide the services. They are gonna train the people and bring the staff into us. And this is what I was talking about earlier, being able to partner with K-12 so that we can bring new services that we don't currently have in adult education in D seventy-nine in to enhance the services we are able to provide.
Do you have literacy coaches on staff?
Literacy coaches.
We don't have literacy coaches, but what we have for adult education, we have instructional facilitators. And what Annette spoke about was being cognizant of making sure that that one instructional facilitator was designated for literacy and somebody that was designated for math. But one thing that we also made sure is that there was someone at all the programs across D seventy-nine that was, that was, because in the past, what, we want to make sure that somebody is designated for each content area as well as for ESL, ENL, our students with disabilities, our transition. So we want somebody on every team, in every program, designated for that work. So with the dyslexia partnership, just to kind of lean in a little bit more about that, what we did was, we definitely, we first partnered and talked about the potential collaboration, and then we did site visits. And with the site visits that Annette and Jackie led, the goal was to just do an assessment of the district needs, not only of the students, but in regards to building the capacity of those teachers. Because this is a pilot, we want to make sure that everybody is on board so that they're receptive to the training and that it's done with fidelity. Once we, once we, once we, we're actually in a phase where we're identifying the sites for the pilot and we're creating a plan on what training is gonna look like for the teachers and then what the materials and resources that will be there to be provided for the students. But in addition to dyslexia, because we definitely recognize that dyslexia is a disability that many of our students face, we're also, as we're screening for dyslexia, identifying, keeping track of any other hindrance and boundaries that might be there. Because we want to make sure, at the end of the day, if we know that we work with the most vulnerable students and they come from different levels, it is our role and our responsibility to ensure that we're meeting them where they need to be.
In terms of dyslexia, we hear a lot, and research has says that most of the inmates at Rikers Island is due to dyslexia. So are, is there, will there be screening at Academy, East River Academy, Students and Passage Academy, and all of the students involved in the justice system? Will there be screening available for them as well?
Yes, Chair Joseph, as the pilot, the pilot program, as Annette spoke about for the adult ed, with regards to the under-twenty-one, ERA, and Passages are the two sites and the two programs that will be doing the screening for dyslexia.
And we're doing both passages.
Yes, we're doing both passages.
You want to make sure both passages will be inputted.
Because that is a game changer. How does New York City Public School coordinate with ACS, Division of Youth and Family Justice, Office of Youth and Family Development, to provide educational services to students? Please describe the roles and responsibilities of each of those agencies in partnership in working with your office.
So with regards to Passages Academy, ACS is the lead agency that determines movement of the students. And when you speak of East River Academy, that's the DOC. But we, and so the goal is, not the goal, we always, like I said, you know, I spoke about it, but with regards to coherence and collaboration. And so on a daily basis, both agencies engage with the teachers and staff that's on that ground level. But in addition to that, there are weekly meetings that are held with leadership on the school level. And a deputy will sit in, a deputy or an executive director will sit in on those calls to have conversation for that building space. And then on a monthly basis, or even whenever it's necessary, I meet with the deputy commissioner of each agency that's overseeing the program overall. And the goal of every meeting is just to make sure that we're all on the same page, that we all are clear on each other's intentions, and we're doing what we need to do collaboratively to move and increase the student, to increase student achievement outcomes in those spaces. The one thing that we found with having this dynamic and this setup for these meetings is that the lines of communications have been open and, and that they're ongoing and they're consistent. And so everybody knows who everyone is, and that, that's lead to, that's led to great conversations and just a space that we can share our perspective and move forward with.
And is, is there a plan set in place for each of these students as to what the outcome would look like?
So with regards to these students, what we, and that's what I, I just want to share again. With regards to the students, that's why we invested in a transition point. Like, there was always a transition person at East River Academy, but we also made sure that there's one at the Passages level as well. So that when the students come in, there's this constant, there's a first conversation and orientation about what is your plan? And then there's a constant communication between the transition point, not only with the student, but also the homeschool. In some cases, students return back... In some cases, students return back.
Correct.
And so we also want to make sure that when you return back to your homeschool, that that transition is smooth as well. We've even had some situations, and what we really try to build on our collaboration. That we've had representatives from the homeschools come in and be a part of graduation. Because we want to make sure that even though, and what I like to say is a moment doesn't define your destiny. And so we want to make sure that, okay, this is what happened, but how do we continue moving on and progressing? Because the goal is to get you back in society and doing what you have to do.
Absolutely. And your, this is a two-fold question. In your under twenty-one, how many students in foster care are you serving? And over twenty-one, how many are you serving? Students in foster care.
So I think in over twenty-one, they wouldn't still be classified. And I can find more information, I don't think we track that foster care. I don't, I'm not sure, we can find out, but I know that they don't, I don't believe we track because that information is voluntary. But for our under twenty-one, we do have those numbers, because I know I saw it. Hold on, I know I saw it. For overall, hold on, because I know, wait, no, it's on the report card. Yeah, I know I saw that. I have that information, it's just trying to. I know it's here, give me just one second. Okay, you have it? No? Okay. Just give me one. Oh, okay, I have it. As of March twenty twenty-three, a hundred and forty-six District Seventy-nine students were in foster care.
And what type of support are you, D seventy-nine provides for these students?
So with regards to the support that we provide, and Jackie tapped, touched on it earlier. By definition, what we do in D seventy-nine, because we know that we're serving the most vulnerable population that come in for second chances. The minute someone comes in, we always make sure that there's a counselor or a social worker that's there to address their needs. With regards to our foster care students, we definitely make sure that they're provided with extra resources. Whether it be more touches with the guidance counselor, any type of referral services. Or any type of waivers that are needed regarding, regarding costs of material items. Or like if they're applying for like colleges and stuff like that. Or we always make sure that anything that could be subsidized, that we do that for them on a district level. And in addition to that, I know that there was, I think there may be one or two of them that are part of our advisory group. Where they spoke about the fact of, you know what, can you make workshops for us that's on adulting? Because at the end of the day, we don't have someone at home, like we don't have a parent that can come to this workshop. How can you create workshops that are just targeted around being an adult? And so we've already seen in one of our schools who have piloted it, JSK, of having adulting workshops. And we want to take that and replicate that throughout other programs.
Please do, please do. Yeah, that's important. So extra resource, refer waivers and workshop. Once they age out sometime, we forget, but we support them here in a program called Fair Futures that the council funds up until the age of twenty-six.
And so once again, and I know I feel like that, I'm begging, but any resources that you have, we are willing and ready to partner. And as you said, you see now that you've shared that, that you go up until twenty-six. What we could do for adult ed that fall between that twenty-one and twenty-six, that's something that we can offer to them. So it's great to be here.
Make sure we get the information, that's a unique population for me. Yeah, in, in college, in college entrance and their whole trajectory. Do you work with any foster care agencies, the ones that are under twenty-one? Do you work with any, any foster care agency, ACS?
We work with ACS, but we don't work with any particular agency directly, but we work with ACS overall. But one thing that we also have done for our students who may not be in foster care. I've already extended and reached out to them virtually for the ACS component that deals with prevention. Where how do we have those parents who might be on the cusp of, of just really needing resources? That we can prevent the, the foster care part even happening? How do we make sure that we give our parents those tools for parent workshops and family counseling? So that we can address some concerns prior to it getting to that point of foster care.
Before the child enters cares. And sometimes it's something simple, it's poverty. Sometimes it's poverty that leads parents and their children into foster care and they lose their children into foster care. And transportation is provided for them and all of that, I just want to make sure. I have to make sure. How is JSK different from any other New York City Public Schools, transfer schools and that are not in D seventy-nine? Talk to me about that program and how unique it is.
So the beauty in it, when I, it really is a beautiful program. Led by a principal that I think would do the work for free, but I can't take his salary away and I know he likes it. So part of the work, the JSK model is that literally has two pathways. So that's one of, that's a transfer school that the students can either leave with a high school equivalency or with a diploma. And the way the transfer school is modeled, it's always attached to a co-op tech piece. And so the students come in and gain instruction so that they can meet the needs of their high school equivalency requirement or their high school diploma. And in addition to that, they have CTE programming. So you're doing the college and career as well as the high school diploma simultaneously. What we're also, what you'll also find that's unique about the JSK model. Is that there's a strong partnership with CBOs to ensure that the students are receiving wraparound services. As well as any type of therapeutic or social emotional learning that needs to be there as well. So I think, and so it's intimate. I actually visited JSK when I spoke to the students. They said that everybody knows your name here, it's almost like cheers, everybody knows your name. And that when they wake up in the morning, they get a text saying, good morning, happy that you're here, happy to see you're on the way. And the students said that makes a difference, that they feel well-known, they feel well-kept for. And that anyone in that building is there willing and ready to help. So between the principal and the AP, they do a phenomenal job, the APs, because we have multiple sites. They do a phenomenal job with making sure our students feel well-kept for. And we take students from the whole gamut, youth involved in everything.
Thank you for that. You're, you said they get two pathways, what are the numbers on the pathways? How many students attend this school? And what are the numbers in the, in the two different pathways?
Okay, so give me one second, so. So the pathway, so I will share with this, the number in the school right, no, I'm in the wrong place, hold on a second. Currently, we have two hundred, well, this was from last year, we have two hundred and sixty-three students that were enrolled. And just keep in, being mindful of, so we had eighty, of those students, two hundred and sixty-three, eighty-six were on the high school track. And fourteen, eighty-six percent was on a high school track and fourteen percent was at the HSC. In addition to that, sometimes with regards to their instruction, it's interrupted. Because these are students who might already be youth justice involved, but on the other side, not in a secured setting. So with regards to that, the number of attainment, we look at the six-year graduation cohort. We had sixty percent graduates in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. And fifty percent had Regent's diplomas. Am I reading this right? No, I'm sorry. Yeah, and, and then we had nine with, we, so we had sixty percent that graduated. Of the sixty percent Regents, fifty percent had Regent's diploma. And nine percent had, it would probably be ten percent, had local diplomas.
And students with local diplomas, what, what's the next step for them? How do you support them?
So the students with local diplomas, what we do is we give priority access for our students at JSK to co-op tech. And so the goal is that if we know they're on a local diploma track, to make sure, even though we offer CTE to everyone that's in JSK. Making sure that those students are leading with certifications or at least trades and skills underneath their set, underneath their belts. So that they're able to go and provide for themselves. And we allow them to stay and do internships at the site as well.
I was about to ask about internships.
Okay, yeah, we allow them.
Yeah, because if, giving them a local diploma, we know what that means. But we want to make sure that we provide the support and the training for them to succeed. Ms. Annette?
She's agreeing.
She's agreeing?
Yeah, that's what she's, look, I was just. She was agreeing. Yeah, she's agreeing.
What would you do differently?
What would I do differently for those students? Ones that after they complete and they do their internship. What I would like to do is I would like to see those students have a pathway to some of the jobs in New York City. That they can use those skills on. And one of the things that I'm most interested in is us being able to partner with the mayor's project that he has. For our children being able to move into those jobs. When I move around New York City and I see all the things that are happening, I see all the things that I know that our students could do with those skills. We make movies in New York City. There are a hundred different jobs out there on a movie set when you walk down the streets of New York City.
Yes, there is.
There are a hundred different jobs out there. Plumbers making excellent money, when the plumber comes in my, in my house, I hold my head. Because I know I have to pay him to come in and I have to pay him for his time there. These are the kinds of jobs that we need to encourage our students who have skills that want to work with their hands. And with their brains, because these jobs are highly skilled. So we want to create pathways between our students at twenty-one, when they're coming out of our programs, out of the, the D seventy-nine programs. We want to make sure that we can move them right into the jobs in New York City. So what we need now is to partner with the unions around in New York City. So that our students can get in those unions, because sometimes it takes ten years to get a book. But we need to create partnerships that says, we're giving our children an opportunity to get in the door.
The New York City kids have first priorities. So start partnering up with one labor union and, and.
So I will add on to what Annette said, that we do have some preliminary partnerships with co-op tech. But to her point, there's so many more that we can do and there's so many opportunities. And acknowledging that if I choose not to be a doctor, there's nothing less than that. I too, you shake your head, I, I hide my purse when a plumber comes. Because, but those are skills that are necessarily needed. And so those are some of the programs that we have at co-op tech that we want to replicate throughout the city as well. Knowing that, you know, just providing access, no matter what borough you're in, you still have access to these spaces. And so that's the work. Definitely echoing her sentiments.
I, I certainly agree. Ms. Ms. Jones, I wanted to ask you a quick question about social emotional learning. Is that also embedded in the curriculum as well?
Yes, what we, what we started to do when I, when we first began to share the social emotional piece with our district. We created social emotional entries into different content areas. So we actually embedded in math, social studies, everything, how to now embed social emotional learning into these curriculum pieces. What's also an expectation, which we also did, was every class throughout the entire district. And, and you can see it when you walk into any building, that social emotional, they must begin the day with a social emotional activity. So besides embedding this into the curricula, we embedded into the culture, you know, of every one of our sites. That's been the work, you know, and that's been the push.
And it's also been culturally relevant for students, because you're serving a huge immigrant population, it has to be culturally relevant.
Yes, absolutely. I just attended, it was interesting, I just attended one of the adult ed programs in Manhattan. For the Women's Month of March, it was, and I can just say to give the principal there amazing kudos. It was amazing, because what we did, we had flags from every one of the countries represented in our Mid-Manhattan program. So yes, the social emotional piece is culturally relevant. We made sure, because, you know, we did not want to miss anything. So we made sure that the students had a voice in what we were putting together. And we went on Amazon and they were looking for every flag possible to make sure that every student who was represented there. So absolutely, the cultural piece is an important piece for the social emotional piece.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, if you're not doing that, you're not reaching the population you want to reach.
Absolutely.
I think for me, that's it. I will send homework over to you. Remember, I was an educator for twenty-two years before I sat in this seat. So Ms. Joseph is still here. She didn't go anywhere, that's, that's the way I lead from. So I will yell and kick for New York City students, making sure they have the resources for them to thrive. Whether they're old and young, in particular heartbeat for foster students.
And we thank you for your time today. Thank you for your partnership throughout our time here as administrators. Ex-chair Traeger has really been a champion for adult education in D seventy-nine. And now knowing that you are now leading this work from the ed chair, from, from being the chair right now. And the work that we done, we did from day one, like day one, when we took over. And, you know, I asked, I said, who do we speak to first? We were directed directly to you. And from August until now, you have definitely been in community, leading, guiding, giving suggestions. Because not only are you advocating for the work in this space, but as you said, Ms. Joseph is still here. And as, as luck would have it, like I said, two weeks ago, you're like, what happened at PS six? And knowing how you were able to get five hundred as a teacher. We are so excited about what's going to happen at this level in that district and how we can replicate it throughout. So we just want to thank you for your time and space and your commitment to this work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Annette, you'll be seeing me again. Have a great evening.
I'll be happy to see you again. And I look forward to the collaboration and the work that we're going to be doing together.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much to New York City Public Schools for your testimony. We will now turn to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For in-person panelists, please come up to the table once your name has been called. And for virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you. And the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. If there is anybody in the room who wishes to testify, please make their way to the sergeant-at-arms at the front. And if there's anybody on Zoom who wishes to testify, please use the raised hand feature. No one in the room and no hand raised.
And this education hearing is adjourned.